Madam. Morning, everyone. Thanks for being here. Roll call.
Thank you, Chair Bone. We'll start with you.
I think I'm here.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Good morning.
Supervisor Wilson?
Present.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Here.
And Supervisor Madron?
Present.
Thank you.
How about we salute our glorious flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam C A O. What have we got changed for us today?
Good morning, Chair Bone. Two items have been pulled from the calendar today. Item D 10 and D 21.
Say, I can't hear you.
D 10, D 21. I'm gonna do my best today.
Can we get an interpreter? All right. Anything else? That's it? Thanks. All right, we'll move to the consent calendar then. We'll take public comment on the consent calendar.
Chair Bone, I have no callers in Zoom.
I have nobody standing at the podium. I'll bring it back to the board. Oh, we do have a caller.
I believe he's online, yeah. I wanted to, I'm not sure if he realized that now is the time. I did want to thank Planning Commissioner Lonix Landry for his service on the Planning Commission, and I know that he expressed interest in saying a few words. At the chair's discretion, are you okay with going back to that?
I, yeah, I just, he wasn't online, so I thought maybe he got shy on us.
Oh, no, he's here.
Great. Speak.
No, thank you. Well, I just want to say it's been a great honor to serve as Planning Commissioner in District Four, and there were some things I wanted to reflect on for our community, and I will keep it brief. And that is, what I really learned in this process was all the array of things that we get involved with as public servants, and it's been wonderful to learn all those new arenas that I had no idea people are contemplating and working on. I've met some incredible people at the Planning Department. I've met some incredible people as fellow commissioners. And what I learned is that they absolutely care about our community deeply. And there may be different perspectives on how we get to implementing, taking care of our community, but there's no doubt in my mind that every single commissioner has a passion to care for, look out for our community. And I learned that, and it was quite the honor to be able to sometimes agree to disagree, but have great conversations and learn how collectively we could all contribute towards the greater good of taking care of our community. So that is something that I definitely witnessed and have the utmost respect for all of the commissioners that I shared that time and space with. The other thing I would say, for all of you, I know that you have that as well, and the deep care for our community, and as you know, we have a coming development potential. And what I would say is, if that is going to happen, I'm referring to offshore wind, then let's assure that we are maximizing our ability for our local community to participate and engage in that process so that we get something out of it. I don't think it's any secret by all the metrics. This is not something that's directly for us in our rural Humboldt County. This is something for the rest of the state, the more populated areas of the state. So I believe in all of your passions and all of your desires to take care of our community, to maximize our abilities. If this is going to happen here, then our local people get a chance to benefit from it and not just be the sacrifices for it. So I trust in all of you, and again, thank you for the ability to serve as Planning Commissioner. And I'm sure that there has been another wonderful selectee who will also look out for our community. So back to my day job of growing scientists and engineers and other folks contributing to the stewardship army, and thank you all for your service, and thank you for the ability to serve our community. That's it.
Thank you. Larry'd be proud of you, kid.
He is.
With that. All right, we do have a proclamation. I don't know if there's someone here for the National Children's Dental Health Month. There you are. How are you? There is. So I'll read this proclamation. Whereas February is National Children's Dental Health Month, a time to acknowledge and support efforts to improve the oral health for our most vulnerable Humboldt County residents, our children, and pregnant people. Whereas tooth decay is the most common disease found in children, is preventable when caregivers assist with children with tooth brushing twice daily for two minutes, using fluoridated toothpaste, flossing daily, and attending routine dental checkups. Whereas babies are not born with germs that cause tooth decay, as oral bacteria is contagious and can be passed from caregivers to children through the sharing of utensils, water bottles, and toothbrushes. Whereas one in four children in Humboldt County will start kindergarten with untreated dental decay, with the greatest burden of oral health issues falling on historically marginalized communities of color and immigrant families. And whereas our county support systems that change, that changes, that create better access to preventive interventions, including fluoride, varnish, dental sealants, and fluoridated water within Humboldt. And whereas we committed the healthcare professionals in Humboldt County who provide dental care and care coordination of the most vulnerable while simultaneously acknowledging the dental workforce shortage that has created limited dental access for many residents in our county. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby calls upon residents of Humboldt County to work together to address oral health disparities.
Is this the time to make a comment? Okay. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Sarah Vogel. I'm the Oral Health Coordinator. Oh, we gotta do this? Makes it even more fun now. I'm Sarah Vogel. I'm the Oral Health Program Coordinator for Public Health. And on behalf of Humboldt County's Dental Advisory Group and Oral Health Leadership Team, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for acknowledging Children's Dental Health Month and the important role that oral health plays in the overall health of each and every person, regardless of age. I'd also like to acknowledge the dental providers that serve our Medi-Cal patients in the area, and those include United Indian Health Services, the Potawat Dental Clinic in Arcata, Open Door Barre Clinic in Eureka, Open Door Fortuna Dental Clinic, Camau's Dental Clinic in Hoopa, Redwoods Rural Dental Clinic in Redway, and We Care Dental Clinic in Scotia. Thanks again for the support and recognition of the ongoing efforts to improve oral health for children and adults in Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thanks. And with that, Supervisor Arroyo, did you want to mention anything about the Chamber of Commerce winners that you supported the other night?
I'd be happy to. So the Eureka Chamber of Commerce has recognized several local businesses for just special recognitions this year, really outstanding contributions to the business community. And I think I'll just go ahead and read out the awardees, if that's okay with you.
That's one, yeah.
All right, so for Small Business of the Year Award, we have Foggy Bottom Boys, Bottoms Boys. For Large Business of the Year Award, Eureka Natural Foods. For Customer Service Award, Jitter Bean Coffee Company. For Positive Community Impact Nonprofit Award, we have the Betty Kwan Chen Homeless Foundation. For Positive Community Impact Award, Leon's Car Care Center. For Extraordinary Business of the Year Award, 20, these are all 2023, Schaefer's Ace Hardware. And for Leadership Impact Award, Nick Bone Crawford. So I want to congratulate all of those selectees, and these are certificates of recognition we're giving, but the Eureka Chamber of Commerce was the one who selected these.
All right. Thank you very much. All very deserving, all good friends. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Matron?
Thank you, Chair Bone. So this is a resolution honoring Barbara Ann Waddell Georgiana. And so I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, so bear with me. She has a lot of accomplishments. Whereas Mrs. Barbara Ann Waddell Georgiana, here and after referred to as Barbara, has dedicated a significant portion of her life to volunteerism and community service. And whereas Barbara's commitment to community service spans several decades with a particular focus on various organizations and causes that have greatly contributed to the betterment of the community. And whereas Barbara's exemplary service commenced in 1974 when she began volunteering for her daughter Beverly in the local four-age club, specifically dedicating her time and efforts to the raising and processing of rabbits. And whereas from 1975 to 1980, Barbara served as a troop leader for the Pioneer Girls and Brigade Boys, a church group akin to Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts in the Fieldbrook community. And whereas between 1985 and 2004, Barbara played an integral role in the Fieldbrook Volunteer Fire Department's Women's Auxiliary Group, actively participating in fundraising activities such as dinners, cake walks, and chili feeds to support the fire department. And whereas from 1986 to 1992, Barbara contributed to the success of the countywide Safe and Sober Initiative as part of the McKinnonville High School's Safe and Sober Program. And whereas Barbara continued her selfless service by teaching Sunday School at the Church of the Joyful Healer from 2001 to 2012. And whereas in 2012 through 14, Barbara joined the Church of Joyful Healer and the Armor, the Amora Group in building homes in Mexico, exemplifying a commitment to international community service. And whereas in 2015, Barbara led a youth group into Crescent City with the Sierra Service Project to engage in community service projects. And whereas since 2014, Barbara has been an active participant in the Grandma and Grandpa's Club at McKinnonville High School, fostering positive intergenerational relationships within the community. And whereas from 2012 to 2020, Barbara served as a valuable member of the McKinnonville Advisory Board, providing guidance and advice to the Fifth District Supervisor on matters concerning McKinnonville. And whereas since 2010, Barbara has been an esteemed board member of the McKinnonville Family Resource Center, contributing to the success of the initiatives aimed at supporting the local community. And whereas since 2014, Barbara has continued her impactful services as a board member for Mad River Adult Daycare, demonstrating a commitment to the well-being of the elderly, excuse me, in our community. And whereas Barbara has been an active and valued member of the Mad River Community Hospital Advisory Board since 2014, contributing to the improvement of healthcare services in the region. And whereas from 2017 to 2023, Barbara dedicated her time and expertise to the Northern Humboldt Union High School District, specifically serving on the Measure Q and N Oversight Community. And whereas since 1998, Barbara has embraced the role of grandmother to eight and great-grandmother to one, adding the richness of family to her already distinguished life. And whereas the board acknowledges and commends Barbara for her outstanding contributions to the community and recognizes the positive impact she has had on the lives of countless individuals, therefore, be it resolved that the board expresses its deepest gratitude to Barbara Ann Waddell Georgiana for her unwavering commitment to community service and officially recognizes and honors her many years of dedicated service. And Barbara couldn't be with us today, but we will be presenting this at an award ceremony in McKinnonville in the coming weeks. So congratulations, Barbara. Wonderful commitment to our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And with that, Supervisor Row?
Thank you, Chair. I have one more comment to make. I want to just give a warm welcome to Jerome Curriazi, who's here in the audience today, who will be serving as the District Four Planning Commissioner. So thank you so much for stepping up and for your interest in that role. And, you know, we all know up here, but I think the, you know, community doesn't always realize just how time-intensive being on the Planning Commission is and how impactful that can be. So thank you very much for serving.
I'm not sure Jerome knows how much time it's going to take. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I'll make a motion for consent calendar minus D 10 and D 21.
Second.
They're moved and seconded? Anybody? Nothing? Go.
All right, Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
All right. Let's discuss D 10 and D 20. D 10 first. I'm not sure who pulled that.
Supervisor Madron pulled this one, so I'll pass it off to Supervisor Madron.
Yeah, no issues with it. I just thought it'd be good to have a conversation, so.
Okay, start it.
I'll start it out by saying that I think it's excellent that there's some funding available to be able to engage at the international, national level for staff and for board members. And I just thought, again, that it'd just be an opportunity for perhaps a short discussion.
Chair, through the chair, we have Economic Development Director Scott Adair with us today, who has been deeply entrenched in all things offshore wind, and I can give your board a brief presentation on the intent and purpose of today's item.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, Chair. Thank you very much. Scott Adair, Director of Economic Development for the County of Humboldt. Prepared just to give some brief context on the funding related to this item. As you're aware, the Board of Supervisors in November of 2022 adopted a resolution which gave staff and department heads certain and specific guidance with regards to preparing the community for the potential emergence of offshore wind off the coast of Humboldt County. That guidance was the impetus for staff work to begin working with community members and shareholders and leaders to prepare those individuals by giving them opportunities for education, to increase their knowledge and their understanding of offshore wind and of the potential impacts to the community. As part of that, funding those activities related to that education and those learning opportunities, staff secured a $1.5 million grant from the state, an additional assistance grant, which is actually a modification, to the county's Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act allocation formula funding that the county receives. This is actually Department of Labor funding, so it is federal funding that is funneled through the state, EDD, Employment Development Department, and then to the county. Through those funds, there has been a set aside of $250,000, which was approved by the state for travel and education and learning opportunities. We have already used that funding to send workforce board members, tribal members, labor representatives, other shareholders to conferences and summits and other educational forums where they can learn more about offshore wind. We also have used that funding to approve 12 scholarships to local Humboldt County residents who primarily are either representing an agency or a population that may be a primary shareholder in offshore wind development. Those scholarships are for a one-year-long program for offshore wind professional sort of development. So we're presently using the funding for this purpose. We have very clear direction and guidance from the state and from our federal partners that the intent of this funding is not to create offshore wind advocates or opponents, but to simply inform the decision-makers and to keep the community educated so that leaders and decision-makers can make informed, knowledgeable decisions when it comes to offshore wind in this potentially emerging industry. So we have identified opportunities abroad and domestically to see models that are actually currently being implemented, floating wind projects that are currently either in some mode of operation or underway or already generating power. Because this is pioneering in many regards for Humboldt County and for the state of California, we don't have local models to really go look at. There are also opportunities not to just look at these operating models, but to meet with government officials, community members, people on the street, in other communities, domestic and abroad, where offshore wind projects have been approved to understand best practices and challenges that other communities have faced along the way. We have identified through our research, also working with council, looking at code, that the county administrative officer actually does have the authority per code to make approvals for any out-of-county travel. However, because we know that this is a subject that the public might be interested in, considering it could involve or out-of-country travel, our county administrative officer asks that staff agendize it, bring it to your board so that there be opportunity for public comment or public discussion. So with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions that you might have?
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you for that brief update. I'm wondering, these grant funds can only be used for travel, is that correct?
The $250,000 carve-out can only be used for that purpose, yes. Otherwise, we'd have to get a modification from the state.
Okay. And then also, who would be the makeup of the people that could possibly be using this through the county for the educational travel?
We have in the past used it for community shareholders. This staunch of, or this, this funding in particular for this item that we're discussing today would primarily be for municipal, county, and other jurisdictional leaders and decision-makers. So it'd be beyond county staff.
Okay, thank you for that.
Supervisor Row?
Thank you. Normally, I wouldn't say anything about what I think is just a slip of the tongue, but in this instance, I think it's important. You've been saying shareholders, and I think you mean stakeholders. I just want to assure the public we're not proposing to take people who own a stock in the wind energy companies on a grant-funded travel. Sorry to jump in there on that, but.
Thank you for that, Supervisor. Trying to avoid the use of stakeholders since it is offensive to some.
Oh, yes.
And it's been challenging to find a suitable replacement for that. Partners, community, invested parties.
Yeah.
Because we also know there are certainly many title holders as well.
Affected people.
Yeah, community, community members who are, I hear you, and I appreciate the language change.
But right, we are not bringing any shareholders in that regard, yeah.
Okay. Did you get your questions answered, Supervisor? Perfect. I'll take public comment on this item.
Kent Swawski, I appreciate Supervisor Madron pulling that. I was one who requested. I think it should have been brought forward so we can all understand what's happening here. I strongly support using as much of that money to do us good in multiple ways. Is, the people who wish to do this, I mean, they can make videos of these few things. I think probably Supervisor Arroyo may have gone over and actually done a site visit over there or had something to do with that, or thinks she did a major trip before. But I think the money would be way better spent to bring all of these people here. Instead of us spending our dollars on motels, travel, and everything of that nature, bring them here. Then they can explain this all to the public. I think that's way more important than just a few people going out and understanding the thing. And that's what it's going to take, because it's going to take a buy-in. I didn't hear whether the tribes have their own pot of money, but I think those would be the people that I would be sending off if they didn't or working with them, because they are the major stakeholders here, and they're actually going to have probably close to the final say on what happens on this particular kind of project, is what I've seen. Traditionally, it's been happening. Fortunately, the tribes are being way more respected in their opinions as far as the environment goes these days, and I'm glad to see that. So I strongly support, see, 1.5, and you had 250 for travel, so you got quite a bit of it. But get as many of these people here to explain. My understanding is that one of the biggest projects of this nature on the East Coast went ahead and shut down because of lack of financial viability. There may be other reasons, but that's what they claimed. I just, I just would really like to see everybody be educated, not just a few that are sent out of the area, and I think that's really important if you want our buy-in. And without our buy-in, you know, the perception is it's not going to benefit us. There's a chance none of the power is going to get landed here. The negative consequences all land on us, just as our Planning Commissioner Lonix said there. You know, this is a major thing, and I think we need to protect ourselves. We need to get the jobs. In the past, we haven't gotten them here. We have multiple cables landing here. The jobs in business go over to the Reading area. The landings make very little money. So this case, let's all be selfish and greedy and create the jobs for our local people here and make sure we have all the seats at the table and work with our local tribe. So they have an opportunity to speak on this important topic.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So my understanding that, especially the international travel, would be to view areas that actually have the wind towers, when, whatever, towers, I guess, and to get a better understanding so that we can educate our local community on, you know, it's hard to know what you're talking about when you don't really have a grasp. I know Supervisor Bone's been asking for animated or, you know, pictures to see, you know, to understand and for the community to understand. And I know Supervisor Arroyo went on a personal trip and stopped in and saw, and did a presentation at the board, which was great, but I do think that's the intent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve the national and international travel for county staff and board members to participate in education and training opportunities related to offshore wind, workforce, supply chain, port, and economic development.
I'll second. And may I make a comment, Supervisor Bone? I do want to just clarify. I did travel last April to Western Denmark on my, on my own personal dime to view the Nordic Aqua Farms facility there because I was already in Denmark on personal travel. So I did happen to see offshore wind that was fixed bottom from the plane. But I did just want to clarify for the public commenter, that was to see a different project. But I will say that that was really helpful for me. All of the information, all of the videos and papers in the world couldn't quite help me understand the entire context of that particular operation. And so I'll say, as much as I love to read and hear data and all of that, you know, I definitely agree that going and seeing the manufacturing taking place, the assembly of some of these components at the port facilities, as well as the maintenance and operations, will, I believe it will really help our contingent to understand it better. So I'm very supportive of this. I can see how the public would have a lot of questions about it, and I think we need to do a really good job documenting what we're doing there and why we're doing it and sharing out that information. And part of that, for me, I will just say, in Denmark, part of my beneficial experience was just talking to random people, you know, sidling up to someone at a restaurant and asking them if I could start a conversation about that. You don't want to be, you know, too weird when you're traveling. Start talking to everybody about the project in their backyard. But when you can, it's also really important and helpful to hear from, from kind of regular people. So when that opportunity presents itself, I think that would also be beneficial.
If it helps, I may offer for the chair that because these are federal funds that are paying for this activity, there is extensive regulatory oversight over the funds. Reporting requirements are very extensive, and the state routinely, not spot audits, but regularly on a schedule, audits, literally send staff to our office, look at copies of invoices, travel expenses, et cetera. So there will be a great deal of scrutiny around this. The opportunities that we are currently looking at, we're looking to, to fit in as much learning and education and research as possible in the shortest time possible. So I anticipate. So I anticipate that you will have a lot of jet-lagged, tired, weary folks, not necessarily a vacation per se, if you will, but a lot of just back-to-back learning and research and market analysis that would be occurring.
Supervisor John?
Thank you, Chair. So last week, the local tribes, led by the Uroc tribe, had a two-day wind summit out in Blue Lake, and unfortunately, we had a long board meeting on Tuesday, couldn't attend then. But am I correct in thinking that members of the tribes could also utilize this if it comes forward to us as a request? Would there be a process for that, or?
We absolutely have funding for that. For this particular trip, we're looking at municipal, jurisdictional, county, the department heads, city managers, essentially decision-makers who don't know enough about offshore wind but might be placed in a position where either representing the county or municipality, they may have to make decisions related to offshore wind. We are using some of that funding also for tribal members. We have sent tribal members to conferences using that funding. One of the scholars that I mentioned earlier is a tribal leader who will now be taking that one-year-long offshore wind program. So we definitely have the means and are using the funding to help the tribes.
Great. Glad to hear it. Thank you.
All right. With that, Nick, want to call for the vote?
Okay. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Director here. And now the next item is D-20, I believe?
D-21.
Twenty-one. Excuse me. And who had the pleasure of pulling that one?
Supervisor Madron pulled this one as well.
You're missing this chair seat, aren't you?
I'm the caller, I guess.
We'll win you slowly.
Thank you, Chair Bone. So again, yeah, I thought it'd be good to talk about this. I thought we had dealt with this all last week, and here we have another request for hiring freeze issue, and so I thought it'd be good to have the conversation. And thank you for being here, Sheriff Hansel.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. So last week was about me suggesting that we have exemptions from the hiring freeze, and I brought forward positions that I felt should be exempt from it because these are essential positions in our continuous recruitment and those kind of things. And so I'm thankful that the board allowed 25 positions to be taken off of the hiring freeze so we can move forward. One of the positions that was on last week was an animal control officer position, or sorry, an animal care attendant position. And so I wanted to bring that in front of the board because it is still a budgeted position, it's still a vital position that we need to have filled, and these hiring freeze positions are going to come up. There's going to be several more that we're going to bring in front of the board over the next several months when we're ready to, you know, open up recruitments or have the need to hire personnel. Our animal care attendants are necessary to keep our animal shelter up and running. Animal care attendant is responsible for the caring, maintenance, and cleaning of all the animals. Right now, we have over 100 animals at our animal shelter. That's 60 dogs, and our capacity is 52. There's 40 kittens, six rabbits, and a hamster right now. That's how many animals we have up there.
And a partridge.
Yes. And so at this point in time, we have three animal care attendants that are doing the job of five. And so I'd like permission to hire one, because right now, what we're doing is we have to bring an animal control officer off the street 40 hours a week to do the duties of an animal care attendant. And that means that we're not actively pursuing investigations, that we're not actively pursuing stray animals, because I have to bring them off the street and to care for these animals, because we do have the duty to care for these animals that are taken and provided that care. So these are essential for the operation of the animal shelter, and so I'm seeking permission to open up a recruitment to hire that care attendant so we can carry on our function here in the county.
And Sheriff Hansel, there's quite a bit of pay difference between the care operator and the, on the, the animal control officer, right?
Yes. It starts at about $19 an hour, and I believe animal control is about $10 more than that, eight to 10.
This is, it's kind of the same thing we came up against when we were putting guys on the weekends on dispatch instead of fulfilling the dispatch services. So that affected, overtime was extreme, and we ended up paying dispatchers $70, $65, $70 an hour because they were on, so on that, we curtailed that pretty much with the expansion and allowing the correctional. So I understand. Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I think you talked about this position last week and said that you were going to be seeking someone, and here we are again. And so I appreciate the animal shelter. I know that, especially in my district, but I know all over Humboldt County, it is utilized a lot. I see the animal truck.
Yes.
Down in my southern Humboldt area, and I also know that a lot of animals go and are reunited with their families, but that it does take work to get that out there and get them, you know, the message out there, and animals are a lot of care, it's daily, two, three times a day. And so I appreciate that you're looking for someone to do that work.
For sure. Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you. Through the chair, I have just a quick question. I think I heard you say, let me correct, that when this position is, when there's not someone around, you're bringing in a patrol officer to maintain that space or to operate?
It's an animal control officer. So we have three animal control officers and a supervising animal control officer that does that.
So those are the kinds of investigations that person will be doing?
Correct.
Not in general? Okay.
Dog bite investigations.
Great. I just want to make sure.
For sure. More likely investigations.
With that, I'll open it up to public comment.
Those of you who know me know that I was very pleased to see this on the agenda this time. The animal shelter is a wonderful thing to go to, and I guess this is a shameless plug. For Valentine's Day, if you can't think of something to get for somebody, go there, and if you can't afford or can't have the capacity to take another pet from the shelter, go ahead and pay the adoption fees, that's what I do down there, and it's just a great feeling to know that you're putting together a loving family and an animal. I strongly support what's down there. I hope in the near future, the city of Blue Lake will be contributing more money to that particular project. Right now, we don't have any coverage in Blue Lake, other than a standard $10,000 we pay. We need to have somebody going around. People don't understand the liability that a city takes when they don't actually have somebody to take care of this. In other words, we had a major dog attack out there, and the city could have been sued, in my opinion, because it didn't have somebody out there patrolling and picking up the dogs running at will. They endanger children, they endanger the public. And the last thing I want to see is the necessity, because we're overburdened with animals, to have to go to a kill shelter, where we have to actually take the lives and euthanize those animals. I know that, I'm not sure whether it was really close to the county line or Trinity or Humboldt, but there was a abandoned grow site there. Some friends of mine went up to rescue, they found three of the five dogs were still alive, the other two were chained up and dead. And for us to have this thing to take care of some of our best treasures and our friends is really important for all of us. So thank you very much for bringing that forward. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. This kind of dovetail from last week's meeting, and I'm just a little bit curious, maybe through the chair, we could ask Sheriff Hansel how this works, but last week, District Five voted no for the 25 positions, and what does that mean? The constituents said you're all good, Trinidad, Oric, Willow Creek, on up, is covered? Or what that means? I was, I kind of didn't understand what that meant, because I'm hearing stories from those areas saying they would appreciate coverage. So maybe we could ask that through the chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Bone. So it's a very reasonable question, and it has nothing to do with whether or not members of the district want the coverage. It has everything to do with all the departments have hiring freezes, and they all could be coming forward and making arguments about the necessity to remove that freeze and to hire more people. That basically doesn't really recognize the budget situation that we're in. And so rather than having that happen, what I'm saying is that we all, as all departments, ought to be working together to try and manage this budget. We can't just spend money we don't have. So that's basically why I voted no.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I do want to bring up that we are still adopting animals at the shelter, Monday through Friday, starting at 10:00 a.m., Monday, Wednesday, Friday, to four, and then 10:00 to 7:00 on Tuesday, Thursday. So animals are great, and they provide therapy and companionship, and so really want to put that out there, that we are, we try not to euthanize that, animals. Unfortunately, we do have to from time to time, that animals that are not adoptable, but we have a lot of great community partners, a lot of people that adopt animals or foster animals, and so we're really working with our community, but we need our community's support to go out there and please adopt animals from the shelter.
And the animals are adopted, they're already up to date on shots, and they're not chipped, though, are they? Are they chipped?
They have to pay for that, but that is something that we do as far as animal care attendants. They take it to the vets to get them all their shots. They actually provide shots there, as well as they do the spade neutering as well.
And it's a nominal fee?
Yes.
But, I mean, we can't do it for free, because in all honesty, we don't have hardship, because if you have to claim a hardship, you're adopting an animal that's going to take some financial investment, so.
Right.
All right. Please.
I'm a little slow getting up here, but I remember Rex said, if your Zoom doesn't work, and it might not, then you need to show up. Well, last Friday, I put myself under the care of the merciless Sisters of St. Joe and got out yesterday, got a holstering. Anyway, that's not why I'm here. I'm here because I still don't understand why y'all insist that he has to come here week after week after week begging for services that we all need. Now y'all know that I spend quite a bit of time out on the street getting my, not staying just so I don't wind up being his guest. I'm getting to the point whereby, crackey, I'm going to get myself arrested and find out, because I know what a wonderful job he and the deputies are doing. And if you don't believe that having an animal to take care of takes your mind off your own crap, then you haven't been loved by an animal. Thank you.
Thanks, Alli. With that, we have, do we have anybody online?
No, Chair, we don't.
All right. I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve an exception to the hiring freeze for one full-time employee for the animal shelter care attendant, one and two.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded.
May I make a comment?
You can.
I was reading through the grand jury report about the animal shelter, which we received last year, and, you know, just taking another look at that and the needs there, and I think, you know, I will be pretty outspoken about how I think we need to save money where we can. As we all know, there is a lot of funds that can only go to specific things. We heard something earlier today, and sometimes it's hard for the public to hear, we have all this money to do one thing, but we, you know, we struggle in another category. And unfortunately, your department is one of those biggest categories where we struggle. And so I fully acknowledge and appreciate Supervisor Madron asking the question about this, but I, after reading that report again, I really feel that this is appropriate, and I appreciate you following the process that we talked about. Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Well, I just think there is this opportunity that we encourage people to go and adopt animals from the shelter there. We're very happy with our Nandor the Relentless, our latest feline addition to the family from the shelter. I want to say that the staff there was wonderful, and the process was very professional, and so just very appreciated. Thanks.
With that, Peggy, you want to?
Do the roll call? All right. Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
No.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Ms. Fuller.
Okay. We will now have public comment on non-agenda items.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is James Chafee. I have come here several times to talk to you about the Board of Trustees of the County, Humboldt County Law Library, which under the law is supposed to provide library service, law library service to every resident of Humboldt County. There are seven members of the Board of Trustees, and you appoint three of them. I want to remind you that instead of posting vacancies on a list, as you're required to do by California statute, and presumably accepting the most qualified applicants, you automatically renewed the appointments from last year at your meeting of January 9th. What message does this send? It means that you categorically reject exercising your discretion, and you categorically reject the idea of accountability. Why should the Law Library Board of Trustees hold themselves accountable if you don't hold yourselves accountable? It reminds me of a news story of many years ago that stuck in my mind because I've seen it reflected so many times. There was a county sheriff in Missouri who was allocated $2.50 at that time per day per inmate for food. Well, they told him that if there was any money left over, he could keep it. You don't have to think about what happened. Every inmate lost weight, and the vast majority of them were so emaciated, they looked like skeletons. There was also a case where there was a cluster of youth suicides in a youth prison farm. They found out finally after investigation that the judges got kickbacks for sending youth to the farm. What this says is that if you provide a motivation for corruption, people will be corrupt. What message does this send? Are you assuring people that appointments to these boards will not be questioned? You're certainly assuring people that you never listen to public comment. This is a lack of accountability and mismanagement that resonates throughout the county. It is a level of mismanagement that everyone understands. You are telling people that they don't have access to constitutional due process because of the irresponsibility of the Board of Trustees, and from that, your irresponsibility as, and they don't have that access because they're residents of Humboldt County, that's a very heavy thing. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chafee, can I ask you a question, sir? Sir?
Of course.
Completely out of the ordinary. What are you after?
I want to use the law library.
Because every time you talk, I just heard, we're corrupt. I'm just, I had somebody just call me last Wednesday and says, hey, what are you doing? I'm down here in the law library looking up something on my property. Well, he's a former custodian, if you're, he's retired now. He used to work at Kapalco. He's not attorney, but he was in the law library, and I don't know how, maybe he kept a key because he used to be a custodian. But... I'm down here in the law library looking up something on my property." Well, he's a former custodian if you're, he's retired now. He used to work at Kapalco. He's not attorney, but he was in the law library, and I don't know how, maybe he kept a key because he used to be a custodian. But he was down there using the law library. And I know the law library is supposed to be open, and I'm just, you come every week, and I appreciate that, and I want, you can come every week. What is the end result you're looking for? Because I, I don't have a clue what you're, except maybe you want us to change the board. We don't have a lot of applications for that setting, but I'm just, what, what would be your end result, or just, you want to come talk every week?
Well, there is a number of statements that you founded that question on that I want, because I don't want to address them all.
And I'm not, I'm not going to debate. Could you, could you give us a written?
The underlying issue is I want to use that law library. I applied to use that lib, law library and was refused, and that's documented in letters I've sent to you as well as my testimony here.
Okay.
You think that's not true?
Not, not going to debate it. I just, I want to know what you know.
Yes, I want to use that law library. That's the foundation.
At your beck and call, or at certain times? I mean, at any time you want? I need answers. People keep asking me, what are you after?
Okay. I don't know if you've been listening to this at all. They make it conditional on making appointments. One-hour appointments. And I applied for appointment, and they wouldn't give me one.
Okay.
And I don't think that even should be true. You know, they should let people line up. They should test, you know, expose how many people can use it at one time, and then let people use it when they need it.
Perfect. Thank you. I was just looking for an answer. Thank you.
Did you get your answer?
Yep.
Thank you.
Chair Bone, I have a point of order before you start my time, please. Is this public comment, or is this a debate amongst the public and the supervisors? So, it's a question.
Public comment. I was seeking an answer, which I'm entitled to ask and answer. So, if I needed an answer from you, I'd ask you.
The public perception is this is not a back and forth at this time, and, and I, I think you, from the reactions of the people, what I saw on the board and the people in the thing, it may be your discretion, but I highly recommend you cease to do so. This is an election cycle, so I wish to speak on election this time. We have void of two meetings, so we're going to see what happens here. It's going to be an interesting one, I think. I will be looking toward the votes between Mike Wilson and Supervisor Bone to see who gets the largest majority of the people. Most of, they most likely will win their seats, you know, it's what politics are. So that's going to be my assessment, to see what it is, and if there's an extreme amount of undervote for those two things, and that's also sending a message to a lot of people out there. Regarding the Second District, I, I see a chance that with a three-way race, that's the one where I see a chance, you never know, there may be a runoff. So that's going to be the one that I see will be a little bit closer, a little bit more contentious, and I think everybody realizes that. When I do look at an assessment as far as somebody who's sitting at the board up here, I've had a few times in my life where I've kind of had some angst. One of them was right now. I guess there's four times now. One was when Mark Lovelace was told by Ryan Sundberg, "People don't like you," at the dais. Another one was when Jimmy Smits was besmeared by a person from the audience who said he should be not alive anymore. And then last meeting was when Mike Wilson inferred that Rex Bone was not a smart person. So there's a saying out there in construction, in construction, and that's what transpired. I looked at the record. In construction, what happens is if you can't make it as a contractor, you go to CR. We have some great building inspectors. Or you be a building inspector. So there's a saying, well, now there's a saying, if you can't make it as an engineer, you go be a supervisor. So hate to have to put it that way, but I think the respect that should be maintained at the board should not go to that level where somebody tries to make themselves look bigger by making someone else look smaller. I think that's inappropriate from your folks. Of course, being a, being a potential bully from the public, I can only bully bullies. That's my rule. Highly recommend that those of you who are up there learn from how Steve Madron conducted these meetings. And for those of you who are being mentored by certain other people, I would, I would recommend that you look toward that rather than some of the people that are up there. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thanks.
Jim?
Well, I was going to start by saying what a cordial meeting this has been. That wasn't on my script.
It's still, it's still cordial.
It's still cordial, and that's part of what I'm here for. Hopefully, each of you has a copy of, yes, our invitation to a forum that's being put on by the League of Women Voters and the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission. There isn't a person in this room that hasn't heard of or been the target of hateful statements that are not only fear-provoking, but downright untrue. Today, more than we would like, hate speech is masquerading as free speech. How in the world can we tell which is which, and what can we do to protect our people and our communities from falling victim to racist, anti-Semitic, homophobic, xenophobic, hate-filled speech and debate? The Humboldt County Human Rights Commission is teaming up with the League of Women Voters to conduct a free, a free public educational forum on this very topic. We will feature six representatives, panel, Rex, excuse me, representative panelists who will try to shed some light on how we recognize hate speech and how we respond to it. On Wednesday, February 21st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., this free forum will work to empower our citizens to speak freely, but respectfully, to one another. The forum will be videotaped and rebroadcast on Access Humboldt, and may be followed by smaller events to build on progress made at this first forum. On behalf of the sponsors, I encourage every council member here and Board of Supervisor member to attend this event, to encourage others to attend. This is a conversation that needs to happen, and it needs to, needs you to help make it happen. Remember, the Sequoia Conference Center, 901 Myrtle Avenue, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, February 21st, and you are all invited.
Thank you. I will be in Sacramento, Jim, but it's how I feel about Sacramento.
Great.
Good morning. Craig Johnson. I think the ballots went out today, so those should be hitting mailboxes within a day or so. And we've had quite the community and unity-building event going through the process of defending Measure A, and, not defending it, but lobbying for the opposition of, I should say. And we've gained the support of Arcata, Eureka, last night, Fortuna. Fortuna was really, you know, the friendly city for us last night. And I think what really brought the tides to tip was the debate at Cal Poly. The proponents started, you know, as we, as we talk more and have more engagement with them, more and more layers get peeled back. And they, they quoted, you know, what they were kind of looking at after this election, and that was to look at all ag and water use, and they named dairy farmers in particular. So that really sent a ripple, I think, through the community, and we kind of looked at what their Trojan horse might be with Measure A. So as, as the ballots come out to the, to the community, you know, we appreciate the support of the Sheriff's Department, former supervisors, future supervisors, and everyone involved, that Measure A, we really, really need to vote no on Measure A. And we appreciate Mike Wilson coming out to the Plaza last week and, and answering some questions to public. That was really, really nice. And Supervisor Bushnell has been a champion, Supervisor Rex, and had a really nice conversation with Natalie Royal, Supervisor Royal last weekend, or last week at the, at the meeting here. So we've made a lot of progress in educating, and that, that's a lot. So we appreciate everyone's time with all that. So thank you so much. We'll be in Riedel tonight, and we're not going to stop until March. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Roy Gomez. I'm running for Third District Supervisor against Mike here, and I just want to thank you all. As I've been on the campaign trail, I gained a lot of perspective on the immense amount of issues that you all have to deal with and decide on as representatives of your constituents. One of the themes I've been hearing a lot of from, as I go door-to-door and talk to different constituents is, a lot of them feel that, you know, they're not heard as much. I know it's difficult to get to, to a board meeting every week with everybody's schedule and the times that it is, but I think reaching out to those, to those constituents would definitely help them feel a little bit more part of the process. And I do want to go on record here and discuss a question and an answer that was provided to Mike in, in an interview with, with K-Mud recently. You know, as I'm hearing all the different issues of people have been following my journey in politics, one of the things that people know about me is that I have called out some public officials for being anarchists, and mainly the fact that they haven't disclosed that. And we discovered that G. Mario Fernandez, who is also the Humboldt County Committee Chair, as well as the City Council Member in Eureka for Ward Three, we discovered that he did not disclose his affiliation and his allegiance to anarchy. And we're talking about violent anarchy. If you go onto Humboldt Grassroots, his organization, he's not just a member, he's an organizer for this group. And they, and they obviously are endorsing Mike. So when Mike answered the question, Humboldt County Democratic Committee is endorsing Mike, and the chair is Mario Fernandez. And Mike said that it's academic, and that he appreciates, and he, he is proud of their support. So I think it's time for us to face this as a county. This is the type of rhetoric, really abolish the police with burning down police departments, Mike. If this is what you want our children to be a part of, and if this is what you're proud of, sir, I think we need to have a discussion here, because you're also my representative, and I don't want to live in a community where my children grow up thinking that this behavior is okay and unchecked. So this is what started my journey in politics, and this is what you're proud of. And we need to talk about this. It's the 800-pound gorilla in the room that nobody wants to talk about, but anarchy is here, and there's leaders in our community that are advocating for it. And you're proud of that, sir. It's time to go on record as many people that are in government. If you're okay with anarchy, which is the dismantling of our government and our system from within, we need to talk about this. Our children are at stake.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to speak again? Same topic.
Sure. It's consent items. You talked on the D-21 last time. I'm not going to tell you no anyway.
See, you are getting smarter.
Slowly but surely. Tell Mike.
I don't even know which old wives' tale to start with, so I'll just tell you, I'm here as an angry old woman. Y'all know how I got here. And I'm also on the Human Rights Commission, and we do manage to speak. We can disagree without being disagreeable, and that's what we're going for in this forum. I know almost everybody in this room either by face, or by name, or by reputation. And I know that even though we are all honorable people, we don't always see eye to eye because there are so many influences inside our heads that nobody can see and nobody can know about unless we spill them out of our mouths, or another orifice. Throwing mud does no good. The big advantage of politics now, over when I ran for school board in Texas in the mid-1980s, I realized that I was not tough enough for politics, but I've developed a harder shell now. And this has to stop. It just has to stop. You can pick up your device or whatever you carry that you depend on, and you can find any kind of idiotic BS you want. Back when I was driving a friend's grandson back and forth to Archbishop Hannah Boys School, there was a billboard north of Willets that said, "Don't use marijuana until you're 28, or your brains might fall out." I think that's happened to some of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else?
Nobody's in.
No calls? Okay. There. We'll take it to our clerk of the board.
Hi, good morning.
Tracy Jamaica, good morning.
So the first item that we have today is to consider the at-large appointment to the Audit Committee. This was due to a vacancy, and we have three applicants, and they are William Cook, Carl Hanson, and Donald Allen. They've all been notified, and I do believe that one is on a phone call and the other two are on Zoom. If you would like to have them introduce themselves prior to discussion, that would be great.
Perfect. Thank you. And we'll do alphabetical, do Mr. Allen first? All right.
I just requested him to unmute. He's unmuted now.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you, and I don't know really what to say. My application, I think, outlines my credentials pretty well. What's, what comes to mind from listening to the discussion already today is my background is, is deep in nonprofit administration, and I was Chief Compliance Officer, essentially, for Internews, which is an international, a nonprofit that works internationally but is based in Arcata. And so although I'm not a trained accountant, I've worked very closely with the accounting department and, and the, those people who implement the programs of the organization. And I'm really familiar with federal regulations governing financial accounting, and, and I'm acutely familiar with the, the tension that seems to be natural between the accounting function and the, and the program function within an organization. And I think I have some good skills at negotiating that tension and easing it, guiding, guiding toward resolution when, when the tension comes up. The audit function really is intended to assure the managers, you, the supervisors and your department managers, that the accounting reports, the financial reports that you receive are accurate and in compliance with all the regulations that govern them. And so then to work with, with the accounting function to improve its procedures, to assure optimal efficiency and correctness in the reports. I just, I really like this stuff. I'm fully retired, and I'd like to, I'd like to contribute some of this expertise that I've acquired over the years to the benefit of the county. So I appreciate your considering me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, and for taking the time to consider my application. I am a current employee at Cal Poly Humboldt. I work for Sponsor Programs Foundation, and we operate in a pretty nebulous and highly regulated environment, similar to the county. We have hundreds of awards with different federal, state, county, nonprofit, and for-profit funders, and it's really important to stay up to speed with all of the different rules and regulations while balancing risks and administrative burden. So I'd like to submit my application for consideration, and I don't, I'm not a CPA, but I do have extensive accounting experience. I become a subject matter expert in things like federal I become a subject matter expert in things like federal procurement, effort reporting, financial conflict of interest and internal controls. And if you have any questions, just let me know and I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Hanson.
Mr. Hanson, press star six to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Gotcha.
All right. Apologize for the technical challenges there, but thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today. I'm Carl Hanson, born and raised here in Humboldt County, raised my family here as well, which at this point makes me want to give back to the community that's been very giving to me. So I'm taking some opportunities to do some volunteer work, have served on some county committees, Workforce Development, the Headwaters, so I kind of have a good sense of how things are functioning in the county, have an accounting background, lots of financial management experience. And so wanted to take the opportunity to bring these skills to the county and kind of help facilitate some of the work of the Auditor Controller's Office, kind of specifically focusing on internal controls, making sure that the resources of the county are protected and used judiciously. And I just think that I, with my background, having worked in city, local government and the state government, very familiar with some processes and think that I can contribute. So just wanted to offer that up and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Wow. I wish we had this much quality in all our opportunities. Good Lord. Thinking about firing a couple people. I'll, do you want to take a public comment first before we discuss? Public comment, please.
Well, I agree. This is phenomenal. So many times you have applicants and maybe there might be one out of four in the room and now we've got everybody. In Blue Lake, we took and there was one, I think was Arts and Heritage, had seven members. We couldn't keep the seat to get a quorum, so we reduced it down to five. This is one committee where I can see you could go ahead and increase your seats available with such qualified people up there. That might be a consideration for those who are not appointed to this, the desire to be here. We're still lacking on our auditing as far as some of our past audits that are not completed yet. My opinion's been that the departments frequently lag in getting the information, whoever's an auditor controller, and so those don't come due fruition. But it's fantastic to see some potential bean counters or people interested in oversight here. And if there's some other way that these people can be used throughout the county through some other appointment where they feel their expertise, I encourage the two people who apparently may not be appointed today to apply. I know there's another thing on the agenda in just a few minutes, which can be somewhat related. Some of the same qualifications are required for that. So I really want to thank the people who did make application and took the time to participate at today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody online?
No Chair. Excuse me, no Chair Bone, we have no callers.
All right. Close public comment. Bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Wilson.
Through the Chair, I'll just throw out my thoughts on this. I did land on, in a tiered thing, the top of my ranking was Mr. Cook for two reasons. One is I ran into him at the farmer's market on Saturday and he expressed his enthusiasm. But really, I think there are reasonable parallels with the institution in terms of size and complexity that he is engaged in. And so I see some parallels there. And yeah, those are the, there's more information I'm sure you all can provide from other folks, but those, I'm just throwing in my two bits there.
These are such phenomenal applicants, all three of them, and so well spoken and really appreciate all that you have to offer. I'd really just love to urge any of you who might be interested in other commissions to consider making our application available for other appointments as well. We really could use the enthusiasm of folks like you in other areas as well. But that said, I would be happy with any of the three, so I'm interested to hear what the rest of the Board thinks.
Supervisor Bushnell and then Madron.
Thank you. I just want to thank the applicants as well. I think that all three are qualified and would be happy with any. And I also want to urge any of them to, if they aren't chosen here, there are other areas that they could be appointed and you could contact Tracy Dimico and she could give you that list or it's on our agendas. So I'm also interested in hearing the Board's opinions, but would be happy with any of, any three of them.
Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I appreciate all three applicants. I agree, they're all qualified. My top pick would be Mr. Cook.
All right. And I, I'm going to lean towards Mr. Hanson because he has served on our Headwaters Board. He's served on a couple of the boards. He basically gets, you can hit the ground running, he understands the complexities and the peculiarities of working on a county situation. So I would lean towards Mr. Hanson just because he has served in the past and done so admirably because he's got, you know, obviously Scott Adair suggested him from his work on the Headwaters and things like that. So that's, but then I've got Cook and Allen tied right behind it. So it's not a, I mean, it's a photo finish, guys. So I'll make a motion that we nominate Carl Hanson for the position.
I'll second.
We'll just call for the vote and move on from there, I guess.
Before we call for the vote, I'm gonna, I do think Carl Hanson has served this committee well in those spaces. I'm still going to hold on Mr. Cook, so on that motion, I'll be voting no.
And I have, that's fine. I understand. I understand. I could throw, I could throw, I could throw a dart at it and do the same thing. So it's not that, it's just, I'm just getting involved and anyway, take a vote. Oh, excuse me.
I just want to make one additional comment. This is a, in no way a reflection on any of the qualifications of Mr. Hanson. I just, I like the idea of giving the opportunity to participate to someone who has not served on one of our commissions before. So similarly, I'd like to see someone who hasn't served before have that opportunity.
Okay. Call for the vote.
All right. Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
No.
Supervisor Arroyo?
No.
Supervisor Madron?
No.
Thank you. Motion fails.
Okay. Your turn, kids.
That's a bit diminutive there. I'll take a shot at it. I'll make the motion to appoint William Cook.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any?
Can I just add that this would be to fill the remainder of the term plus the next two-year term because this kind of has a distinction based on a resignation? So the, if you could just capture the item number two in the recommendation, that would be helpful for staff.
That'd be great. Motion maker, capture that?
The motion maker, maker, maker has captured that.
The seconder will follow. The maker.
Okay. Maybe? There we go. All right. Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes, and thanks again to the applicants.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
I would just like to add that I want to say a special thank you to the Public Information Officer, Koti. This is a process that Koti and I have been working together about getting advertisement out, really putting a call out to qualified applications. And I just think this is proof that what we're working on and that what we've implemented between our departments is working. And I'm hopeful and excited that other at-large appointments will have such qualified and wonderful candidates. And with that, I'll move on to the next item.
Thank you.
This is the, making the consideration for appointing to the at-large and alternate members on the Humboldt County Assessment Appeals Board. So the Assessment Appeals Board is a very specific board that requires some specific qualifications and it does require certification from the state, from the BOE, in order to sit on that board. We meet regularly once a month and it's an important responsibility because we are limited to timeframes in validating or hearing the applications based on state guidance. We did not get any new applications. This is one of the commissions that we do have a hard time filling. The current member that turned out was Richard Phyllis. He is the Chair and he's been a great advocate and member on this board. He's asking for reappointment as that at-large voting member. And then the only other applicant, we didn't get any other applicant, but Julie Portius is the alternate on that commission and she would also like to be reappointed. So that would be the recommendation for today. There is still an at-large alternate position available on that commission, so applications are still being looked at and we would love to have some more qualified people for this as well.
And as stated, there are a certain amount of criteria or guidelines that need to be met. So if you call our Clerk of the Board, you can get what needs to be, what needs to be met.
And because there was no other applications, I did not require these two members that are asking for reappointment to be here today, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Open it to, doing?
I was ready to make the motion, but if you'd like to take a comment first.
I'll take, we've got to have, yeah. Thanks.
That's why I was mentioning before, maybe some of those other two applicants are close to qualifying. I think there's a whole bunch of various, it could be CPA, there's a real long list of things, but most likely there were enough different qualifications, those two people might be qualified for that and highly recommend they do that. In my opinion, this is going to be one of the most important committees you have out there. Because you're, if people, hint to the people out there who paid two or three times value for their cannabis properties that are up in the hills, if they're smart at all, they'll be coming in and appealing those values that they were assessed for because those are way out of line now from what's happened, those property values. I know that doesn't do the county treasurer any good to have those, but it is fair to the people out there. If you only have a certain amount of value to your property, you should be paying tax on that appropriately and not three or four times what it's actually worth based upon. There is some contention, in my opinion, coming out of the particular assessor's office there. And I've noticed there seems to be some questioning and things as far as some things that move forward. So I strongly support that committee be elevated and people understand how important it is to the taxpayers. Not speaking for the taxpayers league, but as far as common sense tax pay, why should you be paying three times what you should be as far as active value? Thank you. I'm up to speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody online?
There are no callers on too.
Seeing that, I'll close public comment. Supervisor Roy?
I remembered.
I'll move approval of staff recommendation. Second.
Supervisor Roy first. Bushnell second. Any other comment? Seeing none? Nick?
All right.
Did you want to say something?
I just want to thank them for being willing to continue. The Assessment Appeals Board is a lot of work and a lot of investigative time for them and also for Clerk Dimico, who runs that and helps with that a lot. So I just want to really thank them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes, yes, yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Chair Bone?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thanks, Mr. Dimico. And now, the fun stuff.
Thank you, Chair Bone. Next up is the mid-year budget review and the first look into the fiscal year 2425 budget. I'd really like to thank the Auditor Controller's Office and all of their staff because this is the first time in a few years that we're able to bring this report to you timely and with good data on fund balances and projections for setting the stage for the new year, which is a really big deal for our office. Also for Deputy CAO Sean Quincy, Assistant CAO Karen Clower, and Deputy CAO Jessica Masiel, who have put in a great deal of work in this report. I hope that you find it very digestible and understandable with a lot of complex budget data in it. So with that, I'll throw it over to Jessica, who will present to your Board.
Good morning, Chair Bone, members of the Board. I have a PowerPoint if Nikki can bring that up for me. All right. So we'll go ahead and get started. Each year, the CAO undertakes a mid-year financial review. This review monitors the county's current fiscal year and provides a preview of the financial status for the next fiscal year. As previously reported, the fiscal year 202324 budget was adopted with an $18.4 million budget deficit. During the mid-year process, improvements in revenues and reductions in expenditures were identified by departments. Based on submissions, it is anticipated that the general fund will end fiscal year 202324 only using $12.4 million, a $6 million reduction from the budget. As a reminder, the fiscal year 2122 and 2223 audits have not been completed and as part of the auditing process, there can be adjustments which may impact fund balance, so there could be changes. This positive news was primarily due to a $3.1 million increase in estimated discretionary revenues. That is from an estimated $1.3 million in property taxes, $300,000 in unbudgeted Measure S tax collections, $1 million in TOT, and the remaining is increases in state apportionments. In addition, there was an additional $578,000 in increased Measure Z revenue, anticipated increased Measure Z revenue, $1 million in anticipated expenditure savings by the probation department, $1.3 million in anticipated expenditure savings by the sheriff's office, and $975,000 in anticipated expenditure savings by the planning and building department. If you add all those up, there are $1 million off and that is because of your Board's adjustment to allocate $1 million to the roads fund on the January 23 meeting. So of the nearly $26 million estimated to be available to fund fiscal year 2425, $5.3 million is Measure Z fund balance, resulting in a remaining $20.7 million in available general fund to fund fiscal year 2425. We'll quickly go through Measure Z as we spent a lot of time on it a couple weeks ago. The Measure Z revenue was adopted at approximately $12.7 million. The most recent revised revenue estimates expect that revenues will come in for fiscal year 2324 at $13.2 million. Expenditures were adopted at $13 million with an additional appropriations of funds of $2.1 million, and that was the carryforwards approved by your Board at the first quarter for a total adjusted. approved by your board at the first quarter, for a total adjusted budget of $15.1 million. Departments report expecting to spend most of their allocations at $14.9 million. As previously mentioned, your board allocated $1 million from Measure Z fund balance to roads for road maintenance repairs. This resulted in an estimated $2.6 million of fund balance use for Measure Z in fiscal year 2324. In addition, your board approved the Measure Z Citizens Advisory Committee's recommendation to establish a reserve of $864,000, so that will leave an estimated $4.4 million in available fund balance for the coming year. At the January 23 meeting, your board also approved recommendations to only allocate Measure Z funds once per year with the budget process, so the Measure Z process application period is open for the coming year and closes on February 23. Next slide. We'll quickly go through some other funds and their estimated ending fund balance. DHHS, we reported at the first quarter, had dipped into a negative fund balance. The primary source of that fund, that negative fund balance was Fund 1160, the social services fund, which has experienced a delay in receipt of state and federal funds, primarily due to the delay in posting of expenditures. DHHS anticipates that the year-end fund balance will be back into the positive of $5.1 million, an improvement of $7.2 million over the current, over the 2223 balance. So this is primarily due to them receiving some of those outstanding receivables from the state. The Fund 1160 and the Behavioral Health Fund will still have negative fund balances, which staff are working with the state and monitoring. The next fund is the Economic Development Fund, which is currently working through several reconciliations, including Project Trellis and Headwaters. Due to these reconciliations, we can't give an accurate estimate of fund balance for that fund at this time. Economic Development is primarily grant-funded and receives only a small general fund allocation. Due to the nature of their work, Economic Development receives many requests to work on projects that do not fall within the scope of their grant funds. It's anticipated that this fund may have gone into the negative as a result of unfunded projects, and additional general fund support may be necessary. This report does include a budget adjustment of general fund contribution that was missed in allocating for match for Project Trellis in fiscal year 2223, so correcting that in this year. The next one is the Road Fund. Public Works reported with the mid-year submissions that revenues will exceed expenditures in the Road Fund in fiscal year 202324, resulting in an ending fund balance of negative $6.7 million, which is an improvement over the 2223 fund balance of $1 million. This is highly dependent on, upon receiving all anticipated disaster assistance funds, and so if those are not received as anticipated, it's likely that this will not be realized. The Library and Aviation Funds estimate relatively little change in fund balance, and the Internal Service Funds report an increase in fund balance of $4.2 million as part of the development of the ISF charges. In 2425, staff will utilize fund balance to reduce charges for county departments where and if possible. Next slide. So here we'll go over a little bit of the anticipated changes. Looking forward to fiscal year 2425, the predicted shortfall is very similar to what we predicted in 2324 at the mid-year of $12.29 million. There, unfortunately, in this year, there are fewer options available to your board to close this funding gap. As with fiscal year 2223, the challenge with using one-time or temporary funding sources is that none of these sources fund the current long-term structural deficit and are heavily dependent on annual budget savings, future budget reductions, and/or identifying and successfully implementing future revenue streams. Some positive steps were made in fiscal year 2324 by your board and by departments, including realizing savings from the VSIP program, and in implementing new budget software, better health insurance and salary projections were produced, which will result in budget savings and more precise budgeting. It is not anticipated that the coming year will have sufficient revenue increases to fund this gap, so the county is in a position of budget deficit again with rising retirement and insurance costs. While the estimated shortfall for 2425 here is $12.29 million, it's anticipated that the budget deficit will be higher than this, since departments don't budget for their vacancy rate typically. Based on an estimated $20.7 million of available fund balance for fiscal year 2425, it is estimated that there will be enough funds to cover the general fund shortfall in the coming year. So over the last five years, the general fund budgeted use has grown with a large uptick in the last two years. This is primarily the result of simultaneous substantial countywide staff salary raises and the reduction in Measure S cannabis excise taxes. So while staff recommend utilizing the remaining general fund balance in the coming year to close the gap, going forward, a priority must be placed on expenditure reductions. The Government Finance Officers Association, or GFLA, recommends that recurring expenditures balance to recurring revenues, and if they do not, that there is a plan to reduce the deficit in the next one to three years. Departments have simply trimmed expenditures as much as possible. It is recommended that your board consider larger actions such as reorganization or program reductions to address the ongoing deficit. This is not eminently necessary in fiscal year 2425, but in the interest of planning for 2526, it's critical to begin to consider these strategies as options. All right. So as a recommendation for process today, I'd just like to offer that we break this into three sections and make a motion for each one. First, the budget piece is points one and two here, that your board accept the report I've just given today and approve the parameters to develop the fiscal year 2425 budget and fiscal year 2324 budget adjustments. Second, consider appointing two members of the board to an ad hoc committee for the upcoming budget season. And third, provide staff direction on potential departmental reorganization. I have a few more slides to go through, which will discuss these three points of action. So our office, and me and Alicia in particular, have spent a lot of time considering a recommendation for general fund allocations for this coming year. It is difficult for departments to go into another year with limited flexibility in the budget. For this reason, we believe that this recommendation is a middle ground between needing to continue to work towards closing the budget gap and providing some flexibility for departments about how they can go about doing that. This will set the general, this recommendation sets the general fund allocations at the same level as fiscal year 2324, with reductions for VSIP savings and increases to departments that received ongoing ARGFAS in fiscal year 2324, sorry, additional requests for general fund allocation. In the interest of working towards fiscal sustainability and realizing savings, we recommend a 20% reduction to those additional requests for general fund allocation amounts. For departments that participated in VSIP, their savings are beyond this 20% reduction, so we recommend that that reduction does not apply to them. This is only two departments that both received an additional request for general fund and participated in VSIP, so it would just be planning and building in the Auditor-and-Controller's Office. That would be exempt. This methodology with the 20% reductions is estimated to provide an additional $1.36 million in savings for the general fund. I will note that this does not reward departments that were able to budget within their allocations in this past year. However, we project that salary and benefit cost should remain stable, which we believe will allow departments to manage this allocation. In addition, we recommend that an evaluation of contributions to other funds and outside agencies be considered. In fiscal year 2324, we allocated over $8 million in general fund to other funds and outside agencies in Budget Unit 110199. Some of those are mandated required contributions, but just evaluating the ones that are voluntary and bringing those back to your board as a decision point. The next recommendation is to de-allocate all unbudgeted positions in the coming budget cycle. As we described last year, several departments are holding positions unbudgeted year after year to meet their general fund allocation. These take resources to manage and impacts the ability to do salary projections. It is recommended that these positions be de-allocated. For additional requests for general fund allocations, we recommend limiting accepting those to one-time expenditures due to the use of general fund balance. To close the budget deficit with additional allocations, it is recommended that these are only accepted for consideration for one-time expenditures. As with current year, we recommend continuing the long-term funding strategy for PARs and set contributions to 2% of salaries, suspend the annual contribution to the deferred maintenance fund, and approve a transfer from the tax loss reserve. Last year, we had some fund balance built up in the tax loss reserve fund that was utilized, which is why this amount recommended is $500,000 less than last year. The county has still not been able to meet building the general reserve to policy level and is nearly $7 million below policy level currently, so staff recommend this be considered if funds allow. And finally, should there be any remaining ARPA funds, it is American Rescue Plan Act funds, it is recommended that those be allocated to ongoing costs that have already been allocated and that will fall to the general fund if we do not fund them. Next slide. Okay. The, this is just a brief list of the budget adjustments that are, for fiscal year 2324, that are in this item for your board. Many of these have been previously approved and are just here for your board's approval for the adjustment. This includes four one-time supplemental budgets, three appropriation transfers, and one transfer from contingencies. Due to a reduction in the amount of rollover funds for the Department of Cannabis Control Grant and Planning and Building, general fund appropriations will decrease by $812,419 as a result of today's budget adjustments. The, this is just to discuss the budget, potentially doing a budget ad hoc for fiscal year 2425. In fiscal year 2324, your board created an ad hoc committee to participate in the budget process and help departments to receive early input from the board in developing their budgets. In fiscal year 2324, Supervisors Arroyo and Bushnell served on the ad hoc committee, and your board may consider forming a fiscal year 2425 budget ad hoc today. All right. So during the fiscal year 2324 budget process, your board directed staff to return with an analysis of county department reorganizations to improve county efficiencies and look for cost-saving measures. Reorganization has been a topic of consideration for some time. The development of the aviation department is an example of recent successful reorganization. In addition, recently, the Department of Finance, a reorganization to combine the auditor, controller, and treasurer tax collector was considered again after a narrowly failed ballot measure in 2016. Your board elected to not place it on the ballot at this time. There are benefits and drawbacks to any reorganization. To successfully implement a reorganization, staff will need time to develop and communicate with impacted departments to gain mutual understanding of the reasoning and benefits of reorganization, as to mitigate confusion and concerns, and ensure a smooth transition for all departments involved. In order to do that, staff seek direction from your board for, about the preferred process for pursuing reorganization options at this time. We've laid out five options for your board regarding this today. If your board selects option one, this would be that you have identified reorganization options that you are interested in right now, and can direct staff to return with plans to implement these specific reorganization options. Option two, direct staff in the CAO's office to internally develop a reorganization plan with alignment to the board's strategic framework and emphasis on cost savings and/or enhanced services. Option three is the same as option two, but adds an internal committee to work on this plan comprised of representatives across the organization. Option four is to contract with a consultant to establish a strategy for reorganization, again, that aligns with the board's strategic framework, cost-saving measures, and enhancing services. And finally, option five elects to do nothing on reorganization at this time. So with that, I'm available for any questions. Nikki, if you don't mind going back to the objective slide.
Chair, could we take a quick break?
I'd love to. We'll come back at five to 11. Seven minutes left. I'll bring it back. We can do. Public comment first. Mrs. D'Amico?
Nikki, can we just bring up the objectives page or slide? So as I said earlier, I would recommend that we consider items one and two for a motion, and then move to three on its own, and move to, and move to four on its own. So at the will of the chair.
Thanks. Nice job. With that, I'll take this to public comment.
I think I read today that the current governor kind of sees nothing positive happening before 3738. I read that as far as the state's budgeting. Unfortunately, you're going to have to find some way to eliminate our extremely high retirement costs. Unfortunately, one of the few ways that you can do that is to take on a whole bunch of part-time employees instead of full-time, and then they don't get all the benefits. That's a real sad state that I see the employment thing going. Fortunately, there's going to be a lot less jobs in the private sector. Those seem to be shutting down because of people changing over to AI or any kind of thing to get rid of those people, so there's going to be more people available, most likely. That's a good thing. But the ability to save some money now for the future or invest, make your investments in a way that you're not committing to long-term investments that you're going to have to unwind later. You don't want to, you don't want to be firing a whole bunch of people later, and that's always a negative thing for you folks and for those people. So good luck with the budgeting process. Strongly support you continuing to have ad hoc committees. I know there seemed to be a little bit of angst on your ad hoc with the Measure Z committee. I did want to bring up the fact that I went down and out of the 656 or whatever people who owe Measure S money, as of a few minutes ago, only 29 of those people had entered into an agreement as far as paying that money back. I think March 31 is the deadline. I'm going to basically say, if you are an honest person out there and have been in that business and continue, want to continue to be there, pressure should be put on all those people to set up payment programs and do the right thing. Really appreciate Michelle Bushnell's entering into that, and a few other people with her family members entered in that. I think, I think Thomas on the planning commission was making efforts to enter into it and being blocked by some processes, we understand. But for people to spend all kinds of money, which put all kinds of anti-this measure or that measure out there and still aren't paying their tax. or that measure out there and still aren't paying their taxes, that's something that I object to. Strongly support in all this, you collecting as much money you can and putting the hammer to everybody out there. If they're going to continue to play in any facet, not just the cannabis business but other one, they need to pay their taxes because that's what we need to keep your wheels running. So, thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Juan Pablo Cervantes. I'm one of your department heads. I'm up here with two things. One is a question in terms of process and what you all are about to be voting on. The additional request for general fund allocations, I saw that 20% reduction. I wasn't clear on if that was, and this is my assumption, if that's a reduction on the allocations that you all provided last year and approved last year, so we're gonna, we're gonna reduce our funding going forward and, and a concern about that process and making that budgetary decision at this point leaves a lot of folks out of the conversation when we actually get into the budgeting process. You know, the kickoff hasn't happened yet and we're already seeing cuts, and our departments really haven't had the ability to talk about what our needs are and what challenges we face going forward and where we might see cuts that actually make sense in terms of providing mandated services versus where those kinds of cuts could impact us going forward. And so I, I caution that recommendation if, if I'm interpreting it correctly. I'll, you know, give a spoiler. I'm going to be asking for a little more money going into the next year. The next budget cycle has a general election, and through the process we went through last year, I imagine you all expected me to do this because that was part of that conversation we had, and so it was a little shocking to see that 20% reduction. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Brian Roberts, Supervisor Candidate District Two. First, for every action, there's a reaction. I've written numerous letters, I've spoken up about many problems within the county, all to have fallen on deaf ears. When we talk about money for the county, we have to look, instead of being reactionary, we need to be proactive. Why is property taxes in District Two falling? We've got two of the top 10 foreclosures in Southern Humboldt, and it comes to actions of the county. What first happened was Measure Z is falling. Why is that falling? What happened during cannabis permitting and the abatement program? There's been many issues. I've sent you letters and different stuff, but none of it gets addressed. When there's a problem with the permitting process, that takes money out of our pocket. I finished the state process prior to be, prior to even having a planner assign to me. Now, once my signer was planned, I had over $100,000 in fees locally, not statewide. I already had a state permit. That money could have been used to purchase a building and to further my business, but instead, I have to be reactionary and, and survive. You then build up your homestead instead of building a business. So, when you ask why is Measure Z money lower, it's because you've taken our money from us. You've taken our ability to, to stay in business and to create new jobs, and that's the main problem. So, if you really want to help us out and find out where Measure S taxes are, you got to, Mike, you said this two years ago, let's look into it. There's three different types of taxes. You have an indoor, you have a mixed light, and you have an outdoor grow. Outdoor grow is the most vulnerable to anybody, and they're subject to fire, wind, rain, everything. Indoor and mixed light is a guaranteed process each year. You can do multiple grows. So, you need to change the tax system and, and look at the farmers and say, hey, we still could have made money in the past two years. Indoor has not been affected nor mixed light because when someone down south is buying product, they look at an outdoor farmer and says, well, you can supply us once. We don't need to pay you. We can easily blow you off and take your product, and there's nothing you can do about it. But then when you go to an indoor cultivator, they're going to process four, six times a year. So, it's hard to stiff them. So, when you're asking about Measure S taxes and our county needs it desperately, look at different growers and find out who's actually staying in business and who's suffering. Outdoor small cultivators are suffering. We can take Measure S tax dollars and we can use it for our county, and it's a direct correlation. If we don't have money, we can't go spend. If we can't spend, Measure Z funds are gonna, you're gonna be short every year. So, there's a direct correlation of your actions and what happens to us out in the public. Thank you and have a good day.
Hi, Board. Roy Gomez here, and I've actually spoke on this, on Measure S and the accountability aspect. I truly believe that accountability and transparency are really the bedrock of any democratic republic and any, any measure that's passed that is promised an audit annually that can be reviewed by the public in order to sell that and get the votes to actually pass that through, which is what Measure S did. I've, I've done research on, on the ballot itself and what was used, including rainy day funds was one of the, the things that the money was supposed to be allocated towards. I mean, there's a series of, of different services that it was, the word earmark was never used, but it certainly seemed like things were going to be earmarked. And the rainy day fund to me sticks in my head because we're having rainy days now, we're in a budget deficit now, so we sure could use those funds if money was supposed to be allocated there, which it was sold as such. So, I do feel that, you know, transparency and the audit that hasn't come, I'm, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, if there has been an audit on Measure S annually, one time, if there has been, you know, maybe I'm, I'm wrong here and missing something, but that was in the language, and I think it really takes a, a weight off of everyone's shoulders if that is audited and, and these measures and certain funds, you know, to, to just say that it's, it got dumped into the general fund and we can't really earmark and tell where the money went at this point, but $59 million is a lot of money, and I feel like, you know, there, there could be a potential erosion of public trust when they're told certain funds are going to go somewhere and they're going to be audited annually and there'll be a public review and, and then that not happen. So, I think that, you know, if, if I get the seat here, I will, you know, definitely make sure that, you know, the language we're using isn't insinuating certain things because earmark is earmark, and I never saw the word earmark in, in Measure, Measure S in, in the actual language sold for it, but it was pretty insinuative as far as what it was going to go towards. So, yeah, if we could see an audit where the money went or it's just lost in the general fund, you know, I definitely would appreciate seeing something.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Chair, but we have caller 0151.
Great, thanks.
You've been prompted to unmute. Press star six to unmute yourself, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning. This is Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. This whole, this whole report is certainly fascinating. There's, I don't understand why the general community, the, the people that live in this county are not asked, are not visited, are not responded to. When people call like myself, when I call and say something about a huge need that's really important and really urgent, I don't get a telephone call back from anybody. And, and it's really important for us to realize, we are talking to a board. We're not just talking to the supervisor that's in our area. We're talking to the board because you are supposed to be a team. So, I really expect a callback from the team. It's fair and it's reasonable to do that. As far as economic development, if you're not paying attention to what's happening in Southern, in Southern Humboldt and what a disaster it is, then you're not working on the team the way that you should. I went to the strategic plan, I sat there for days with my husband as well, and there was going to be all kinds of things and all kinds of response and good things happening for some of the houseless populations. That hasn't happened at all, and it's just fallen on the churches and individual people to correct the problem. And there isn't an emergency shelter here, but there are funds that are available from the state and the feds if we just access them. So, economic development has to happen. A general plan has to happen. The Avenue of the Giants Plan, we haven't been invited to an Avenue of the Giants Plan meeting for over 20 years. Avenue of the Giants does exist, it is important, and, and we're not getting the attention that we need or the resources or even just the help. Any kind of help would be, would be a good idea. In-home supportive services is not properly funded, it's not properly taken care of, and that's money coming from the state that would come into this county, and people aren't even getting the in-home support services that they need because they're understaffed. So, I don't know why we're not asking people that live here what all the problems are and what's wrong and how they can fix it because there's lots of money that could come to this county by other areas. And educating Southern Humboldt would be really nice. We started to have a, a location down here in Garberville, and that all just went by the wayside and turned out to be for the hospital instead of for the schools. We need education, we need opportunity down here, and we need satellite locations. So, I hope somebody will listen to this and we can make some progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all? Yep. Bring it back to Board. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to correct an item in the staff report, and I may be wrong, but it's not, what's written here on Measure S is not my memory of what we did. It talks about the board taking an action to push the deadline out for payment to March 31st, 2025. I think that's an error. My memory was that we said that people had to come in by March of this year and set up a payment plan and that they then had to make full and due payments by December 31st of this year. That was my memory of the actions that we took. And I talked to Director Ford about this quite a bit, trying to clarify, and he was talking about how they were going to bring a measure forward to allow for suspension and/or revocation of licenses before this March deadline. So, can we get some clarification on that?
Yeah, I can clarify that for you. Director Ford did bring an item to your board later last year, and that item contained a recommendation that was exactly what you just depicted. However, the motion was to provide for an extension through March. That was in response to public feedback that was received, so that's where the March deadline comes from. It, it was the, your board's motion was to allow for that additional extension through March of 2025 to bring those payment plans current and, and get those taxes paid off by that deadline.
Yeah, that's not my memory at all, and what happened was we were considering a deadline of October when we met on this issue last year, and that's what we extended out to, to March for a payment plan and December for final payment of 2024. That was my memory. I mean, I could be wrong, but I would like very much to go back and review the record on that because I don't believe we gave a year and a half extension.
I have the, the motion right here was made by Supervisor Wilson, seconded by Supervisor Arroyo, to approve staff recommendations to include the suggested amendment to push the deadlines out by 90 days, dates reflected below. Modify the current due date that is set for 12/31/23 to 3/31/24, so that's the date that they must come in to establish the payment plan. Modify the current due date that is set for 12/31/24 to 3/31/25, so that's the date that they must be paid in full through their payment plan. The motion carried with the following votes. Supervisor Bushnell abstained, and you voted no Supervisor Madron.
Well, that might explain why my memory isn't, isn't remembering that way because I didn't want it to go that way, I guess. I voted against it, so that certainly helps clarify one thing. But what you're saying is that there's still a deadline of March of this year for a payment plan to be initiated, and if you have not initiated a payment plan by that date, then actions could be taken to suspend your license once Director Ford brings that item forward because I believe right now all there is is the ability to revoke. So, if we could get clarification from Director Ford on that, and I realize this is a subset of a very large budget discussion and many items to consider.
Through to Chair. Please.
John Ford, Planning and Building. The provision to allow the suspensions were embedded and part of the short-term rental ordinance that the board continued to March 5th.
Okay.
So, when that gets adopted, that suspension provision will also become effective. We have sent out notices to all the permit holders advising them of, of the action that the board took and what their obligations are under that, and so we are currently working on that.
So, it's embedded in the short-term rental ordinance, the Measure S suspension?
Ironically, the short-term rental ordinance also had a provision for suspension that was moving forward. Rather than create something separate, we just embellished it and brought it forward as a package.
Look at that reorganization and consolidation. That's great. But do you agree that we did move out to March of '25 for final payment, not December?
Final payment, yes. They have to be into an agreement by March of '24, the end of March of '24.
Okay. All right, thanks for the clarification, everybody. I appreciate that.
If I could also address the clerk recorder's comments on the general fund allocations. The 20% reduction is only on the amounts that were requested as additional funding last year, so everybody got the same base that they were allocated last year. They're only receiving a reduction on their additional funding. And if you recall, last year, your board approved $9.1 million in additional funding, which is part of the cause for stretching our budget so far in, in being able to fund those additional funding requests. There is also a table included in today's staff report that shows the departments exactly how much that reduction that is anticipated for the clerk recorder, it's $60,000. So, I hope that, that departments find these to be relatively minimal staffer, or excuse me, funding reductions and that with stable salary projections, that that's something that we believe that they'll be able to effectively manage.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Row.
I'm sorry, process-wise, could you pull up what you had again as the, that one slide, and I want to just make sure I'm clear on. You said to, it would be your recommendation to address items one and two together and then three and four together.
Yeah, items one and two. Item one is just on this slide. It just correlates to items one, two, and three on the staff report, is to receive the report I gave today and approve the parameters to develop the fiscal year 2425 budget and approve the fiscal year 2324 budget adjustments.
Okay. Could you then pull up the slide that's associated with the parameters for 2425 because there was a lot on that? If that's in our?
Next slide.
Packet. It's, it's not in the same format in our staff report, but it's definitely a robust staff report, thank you. Okay, I think I just need a moment to read this again. I don't have anything else to add right now.
And these are all included in recommendation number two of the staff report.
Supervisor Wilson.
I was just hoping to make the recommendation that we maintain the budget committee as it was for continuity. I think Supervisor Arroyo and Supervisor Bushnell did a great job, and I think that it would be great to have them continue in that position should they want to do that.
For process, Chair, I don't know if you would like to move to maybe the simpler item is the budget ad hoc and do a motion for that?
Is, was that a motion?
It's only a motion if the, the volun, what do you call it when you volunteer somebody? Voluntual.
You nominated us.
Nominated, right, right, nominated. When the nominees are, are down.
Led the sacrifice.
I'll second that motion. I am willing to continue to serve. I will say, it's important and I appreciate the opportunity to talk with folks, and it's hard. This is not, this is, has easily been my least fun committee, although I learned a lot. So-
So I, but I will continue to, to, to serve in that role.
I equally will continue. And I agree with Supervisor Arroyo. It's hard to, it is hard. And it's, it involves people and it involves services that then trickle out to the communities. And just like Juan, you know, he, he has, his department needs to uphold, you know, a certain, something that we provide to constituents. And it's really hard too, when they are trying to figure out how to make their departments work efficiently. And so, yes, I am willing, but it is a lot of work.
All right.
It's with gratitude. I maintain my...
Okay.
My motion.
So it's been moved and seconded since I was pulled out. Do I need to do public comment on that? Okay. Just making. Thank you. Supervisor Madron.
Yeah, I appreciate this being brought forward as an action. Because as we know, ad hocs are supposed to be temporary, not ongoing. And so I think this is a really good action to take to really document that. While budgeting is ongoing, and every year it's important. And I very much appreciate the two volunteers in stepping up and continuing that continuity. I think that's great. I still think it's really good that we're recognizing that that ad hoc has finished its work and now we're starting a new ad hoc. And I think that just respects process in a good way. So thank you.
If I, Chair.
Please.
Thank you. To the motion maker, I mean, we could probably add in one. Receive, file, receive and file the review of the current 2023, 2024, just to get that one item out of the way as well.
If it's the pleasure of the board, I'm happy to do that. I don't see, I'm not proposing any major amendments or insignificant amendments to what's being proposed by staff under that. So...
Yeah, well, that's just to receive and file the report. And then I, I think probably more discussion on two, but just to add it to lump those in.
Sure. Well, I'll add action number one on there as well. Secondary, are you okay with that?
I'm sorry. I was going through the staff report again, looking for the wording.
Just say yes.
Well, so the, what I recall was that action number one was to receive and file and to adopt those recommendations for this fiscal year. Two, thank you.
Two.
Okay.
Yeah, then two goes to the...
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I support that.
Nikki.
And as a motioner, I'll speak to this just for a minute. I just want to really appreciate the work of the staff putting this together. This is a robust staff report. We've gone through, I will say, it's actually one of the more direct staff reports. And we've had heftier and more, I don't know. I think it's a, you guys are refining this messaging and how to, and how to deliver this information. It just gets better and better. And this is a lot. And I think you guys are really, just really just get to the core points. And I really appreciate that very much, so.
Yeah. Nice job. And knowing that you spent probably 15 times as much time as we're spending on it, and that's what we've charged you to do for us to come out here and nitpick it to death would probably be a lesson in futility. Supervisor Row.
I, I do want to say, I am tracking what the motion is and what we're doing here. I, part of my hesitation also was that the gears were turning about the role of the budget ad hoc committee. Because I think we need to then establish, you know, what, or refine what that role is this coming year based on some of those other considerations. So I think that'll come in the next phase, the next motion to be made. But I, anyway, I, I think we need to talk about that and figure out, you know. I would really appreciate, as a nominee to that committee, if we have more clear direction from our board going into that committee. Because, so that's what we're going to talk about next. But I'm happy to serve. And also, I want to feel empowered to go and, you know, provide more concise direction.
Are we ready for a vote?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you. Chair Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Chair.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. Could I ask that you pull the slide up for the next item, which will be the recommendations for item two?
Which one is it?
That one, right there. Nikki. Would it be helpful for your board to go through each of these items individually?
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. For me, the, talk about the reorganization is critical to, I think, before, for, for myself. Because how do we fix our deficit? We either increase funds coming in, which we're going to tax people, more people, or we find, we find some efficiencies in our departments to be able to reduce the, the amount of money that those departments need. And so I think, I mean, I understand that this is going forward and this is a process. But also with that process, I would like to have the discussion about the reorganization. And maybe it's a, maybe it's two motion, those two motions and one? And to see how we can get there?
We, we could, through the Chair, we could discuss the reorganization point first, if that would be preferable.
Sounds like that's the request. And I don't know if any of the other boards, I see no opposition to that. So that would be fine.
Nikki, that's the last slide, if you want to bring that up.
So in, through the Chair.
Sure.
Thank you. When I, when I spoke with your department about how, how can we efficiently reduce the deficit and, and retain services to the community, which is what the community wants, but also wants to be budgetly, you know, responsible? Reorganization is something that has been talked about a lot. Unfortunately, I think to be very efficient in the reorganization, it will take money. And so if you could talk about that first.
The staff report discusses sort of three options for your board to consider in, from a process perspective in evaluating reorganization. The first being hiring out and acquiring a consultant to evaluate our services. And what we're really looking for is opportunities where we can use technology in lieu of human capital so that we can reduce our workforce through attrition, which has always been my message, that that's what I'm, I'm trying to accomplish in conjunction with your board, so that we don't find ourselves in a layoff situation. And also by identifying where we might have some duplication of services that we could consolidate together to create improved efficiencies. The benefit to hiring an outside consultant is that you bring in a neutral third-party perspective. A lot of times, these conversations are difficult for department heads because they are, you know, they're very attached to their services. They're very committed to their services. And, and so those are difficult conversations to have amongst each other. And so that neutral party sort of takes the peopling out of it and brings a very pragmatic approach to it. The negative to that is that there's, there's a front-loading of cost to that. And it, and that could be expensive. If we were to embark on an organization-wide analysis, I, I would, you know, just ballparking, probably be close to a half-million-dollar investment to do that org-wide. If we wanted to parse that out by smaller programs, then we could, you know, whittle that down. But if that was the route that your board wanted to go, we would need to do RFPs and seek out a professional consultant to do that work for us and define that scope of work for them.
So if I could finish, thank you. So the other option is to have your staff do it. I don't know workload-wise whether that is really the route to go. It's going to add more to your staff. And how efficient do you think that would be? And I understand the $500,000 price tag, but in the end, what could that really save and, and bring back to the organization as far as balancing the budget? And then along with that question, I want to hit on, because the reorganization is about efficiencies and reducing budget asks in departments. But the other way to offset the budget deficit is to bring in more revenue. How likely is that? And it's not a, you know, it's not a comfortable question for the public when, when they already see statement tax dollars, their tax dollars not accomplishing what they want to see in the community. And so is there another way to bring in revenues? I know grants. I know that, you know, we've tried all that and that also takes money. So could you hit on that with the reorganization and with increasing revenues to try to balance out the budget and what that looks like?
I would, I would just say, as reported in the report, in the staff report, in the coming year, there's, there's no immediate increase in revenues, especially discretionary revenues. While grants can certainly help, they're often very specific. And so we would need to be targeted around the services that are lacking funding while also avoiding subplantation in those cases. So I, in the coming year, I don't think that increased revenues are going to be an option for closing the budget deficit.
And the second part of that question, is your department able to do this work without getting a consultant?
It would be difficult for sure. We have started to do some initial analysis. And Karen Clowers, your chief operating officer, so she would be charged with this. And we would need to peel some things off of her plate to be able to do that. You know, and going into the new budget cycle, I will be looking at my own department and how I might be able to capitalize on my own staffing resources and how I can sort of shift some things around to improve efficiencies within my own department. So if that was your board's direction, then that would certainly be at the forethought of how I best provide services in the CAO's office coming, in the coming year.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Row.
Thank you. Have a few thoughts right off the bat. So, I mean, I, I just think it's helpful to acknowledge broadly speaking that capital improvements and specific programs are quote, "easier to fund." Not always, but many times there's like one-time funding streams for capital improvements or, you know, a three-year program to do X, Y, and Z is much easier to fund than long-term, you know, operations and staffing. And to acknowledge that's true for pretty much every department, although it looks different in different departments. I do think, you know, when we talk about the math of what are, you know, how much we're going to have to take from fund balance to, to address any shortfalls, you know, it looks like we're projecting, you know, almost holding steady, but a bit of an increase this next year in the amount we're drawing from our existing piggy bank. So not really, you know, holding steady. So I would really find it helpful, and this is very challenging to do, but if we had a bit of a, an estimate from departments about, you know, projecting out four years, three to five years out, somewhere in that realm, about what are, what are potential for major changes in those departments is if, if we continue to go with what we're doing now? And we may have those rough numbers, but essentially, I want to understand the potential for layoffs. And, and I want to understand it, you know, five years out-ish, because the changes we need to make today might, or this coming fiscal year may take time to implement. So it does feel, to, to the clerk recorder and registrar's comments, it does feel like I want to empower department heads to take a role in this. And I would love to have the information from them, especially as we go into these budget sessions with the ad hoc, to understand that better. So that's, that's one piece of information I feel like would be really important so we understand the implications of the work. I, I also would, would propose something that's a little different from what's on the slide for consideration by my board. And I'd be interested in feedback from, from staff who are here on the dais and not, which is to have the department heads and their leadership teams, whatever that looks like in each department, take a crack at reorganization with the opportunity to request technical assistance from a consultant. Every department's different. Some departments know exactly what they would need. They're, they frankly have a simpler structure, smaller staff, can really, you know, identify some permutations that might work for them. And some, I think, would struggle with that and might benefit from that technical assistance. So that might be a way to minimize the cost and the workload for that consultant and for our CAO's team by providing that by request. And then, you know, again, looking at those projections that departments have and what technical assistance is available, I think we'll need to, you know, go through and perhaps review with the CAO and the ad hoc what these recommendations might be. It might make sense for us to have an ad hoc that's about the budget and a different ad hoc that's about reorg. Or for that to be a clear separation. I'm not sure if we want to lump those two things together or not. Some of it, you know, I, as a newer member of this board, I feel less capable of saying, here's how we should reorganize the county, than people who have been on the board longer. And I, I would actually consider deferring to you all on making recommendations of that scope. So anyway, I think those are my thoughts around, you know, empowering department heads to do that themselves. But it all goes back to them, they're going to need parameters or goals from this board to be able to do that work.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, Supervisor Arroyo. So I, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I thought our board directed last year for department heads to come forward with similarly what you just said, efficiencies that could be recognized in their departments. And I would imagine that the work, if we had the CAO's office do a reorg, the reorganization work, they would be very dependent on the department heads to bring those forward, those recommendations forward with, with the CAO. If Karen, sorry, Karen, is going to be the one doing that work, I think it would be very dependent on the department heads. If you're asking that the department head, that we don't direct the CAO or at this time to do that, but then request a timeframe for the department heads to really get into it, is that the question? Is that the ask?
I think, you know, if we're telling our departments to plan on only a 10% increase in funding in five years or something like that, like work backwards from this parameter, this goal, then, then I think that's, that's important for us to help work with them to identify. I mean, I, I want them to be part of the process. I don't want to just say, you know, 20% off the top, you know, and moving forward, you know, you shall not go above that, that kind of thing. I don't think that's going to be entirely practical. While it might be helpful to set those targets for this coming fiscal year, I'm thinking reorg-wise, they're going to want to look longer term. You know, do we want them to essentially operate within their current budget plus a small percentage increase based on what we think economically we're going to, you know, project out? I don't know. That's the kind of work that I think we should empower them to do once we have an idea of what the constraints are. And so it's hard to work through this right now because I don't have all the information. But I think together, we can identify a process for that.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
I have some thoughts on this. I'm not sure we can...
I have some thoughts on this. I'm not sure we can really actually fully get through this subject matter today. I mean, so one is we have strategic planning process, and I think that that can help outline some of the issues around what might be reorganization. And I don't know, you know, are we limiting our discussion around reorganization just within departments or cross-departmentally? And if it's across departments, then getting input from department heads is important, but also to understand like that we have had some reorganization in the past with some resistance from, from department heads, as you might imagine. Again, managing for those kinds of changes is already difficult for departments that are just, you know, trying to manage the department and keep things going in the way that they see fit. So I think it's important that the framework for this is, I think, broader and more sort of global organizationally than just within departments, that it's, it's cross-departmentally. And taxation or revenues, I'm sure with taxation, but there's also cost recovery are issues for us and we need to, you know, deal with that. That it's, and fees for services and those sorts of things. And, and then there's, you know, we're, we are seeing some revenue increases with in some of those sources. And then programmatically, we receive revenue for programs that we administer. And we've actually done pretty well in some of our departments around that. And I, and I believe we have a great team that, that does that, does, does a lot of that work. So we have a broad sort of portfolio of revenue streams. So, and then also in reorganization, it's not just cost cutting. It's where we talked about efficiencies, and it's not just about cost cutting. It's actually, if we can get better service, that's ultimately what we're trying to get to. It's not just cutting costs. It's like, can we provide better service to our communities for what we're, for what we're taking in for revenue? And I think that should, ultimately that's more of the goal from, from my perspective. Cost cutting is very important and we've talked about all those things. But service is what we're in, what we're in the business of doing, and I think it's important. And sometimes you can provide better services and no cost increases. And sometimes even a decreased, just depending on modernization of all kinds of things. And one thing we talked about is capital improvements. And while capital improvements sound like a cost and often they, they can be and are, they're actually more prone to external funding, and so that's always a benefit. But if they increase efficiency, not just efficiency in workforce or efficiency in hiring, because you have nicer places for people to work or, or better places to serve the public, but they're more efficient from an energy perspective, they're just more efficient from a lot of other things, that those can actually produce savings and moving forward and better cost service. So there's that. So we haven't actually talked about the list of things we might want to consider for reorganization. And so I have some things that we have talked about in the past that I'm willing to put on the floor to talk about either today or in the future. And they may not be popular with this board or, but I just want to like, or with public, or with department heads. But I want to, do you want to put them out there because we've talked about them in the past a little bit? One is the, the O E S, Operation of Emerg-, Office of Emergency Services. In many counties, it's not under the sheriff's department. In many counties, it's in a separate department. The reason for that is administratively, a lot of communities view that service, emergency services as sort of more of an ongoing and, and planning effort, not a law enforcement effort. Right? And it's an effort that while you connect with your law enforcement and your, and your, and your other agencies, emergency agencies, oriented agencies, in the time when you're having what you consider as sort of the acute emergency, there is this long-term process of, of, of keeping people fed and housed and moving into the services of fixing things and repair, all that other stuff that may not for some places work well under the, under, under the sort of the sheriff banner or, or house. That's not saying that we aren't doing it really well in the current situation. I'm just saying that like, if you were going to consider some sort of reorgs, this is one we're seeing. There's, there's, there's multiple ways to do this. And I think it's, and also more and more communities are looking at O E S tied with climate resiliency. Right? And so, and right now we have a climate resilience office, not like, it's not really an officer in the way that we look at it from, from that position in terms of other communities. But it's now being kind of put into this O E S under the sheriff, which in many, it's just sort of, it's in, it's not the normal place where you would have those, have, have that. So I'm saying it's worth a conversation. I don't know where we get with that, but I think it's something we should consider. The next one, and we've talked about in the past, is a coroner and public administrator. I think there is, in many places, that also is not under the sheriff's purview. I think it's worth a discussion. Again, we may have the best that we can do under what we have, and I think that's a, it's, I can accept that. Like, but I don't know if we have a great analysis around that and, and we might want to consider. Again, these positions all have an overhead associated with them under the sheriff's department that might be different under a different apartment. And even the animal shelter, which again, in many other places, not under the sheriff's department, but under a different department. Worthy of discussion. And I think that all of those things are, I think, something to consider. Kind of going into a next space would be the, under our public works department. And we, with some resistance, had moved the aviation out of public works in the past. There was a thought that, you know, that we would lose efficiencies around that. Well, I think that we showed that, that that, that actually with increased attention, and again, I'm going back to those other, the list I just went through, but like with increased attention by a person who really could get into those spaces and, and from a departmental perspective and gain funding externally and those sorts of things, we showed that, that that was a, I consider that somewhat successful, actually pretty successful considering the trajectory we were on. And then moving into, I think there, we need conversation about whether our facilities and facilities planning might be taken and, or whatever, moved out of public works again to, to, to function in a different way. That public works might be better in served as a more of a roads and, and infrastructure organization. And then facilities sort of independently run or, or in a different space. So there's some of the ideas. I'm just throwing them out there. I'm just like saying, these are the conversations we've had in the past. I'm happy to engage in them more. I'm not sure like today we're going to like fully vet all that. And I think what I would like to do is, is get the temperature of the board on whether any of these are worth more discussion. Because honestly, if it's like, if the board's not into it, we're just, will we do that later, I guess, or never. But those are some of the concepts. And we already went through the, the, you know, sort of the auditor controller conversation. I don't think we have to relitigate that again on this board. So those are some of the ideas I have, and I'm sure others have other ideas.
Okay. Supervisor Roger.
Thank you, Chair. Well, those ideas definitely resonate with me, Supervisor Wilson. You know, I will also say that I think a couple of years ago, we added two staff members to Parks Public Works for grant writing and project management, and I think that was a great move. They immediately were sucked up into a lot of project management because that was a strong need and have not been able to do as much grant writing as possible. I think if done well, grant writing is a moneymaker. You know, you almost always bring in, if you have talent, more money through the grants that not only pay for those positions ultimately and take them out of the general fund, but make them supported by the grants themselves. But you bring in large amounts of money to do all kinds of projects. And I think Public Works in Parks is a great example of that with their management of the North Coast Resource Partnership, which is a seven-county partnership that brings in millions and millions of dollars to the North State, including Humboldt County. We fare quite well in that process because we have a lot of very qualified watershed partners and tribes in, in the county that partner with Public Works on projects and, and with the North Coast Resource Partnership. So that's, you know, not everybody can make good use of grant writers. I think D H H S does a fantastic job. I mean, a, a huge amount of their programs are grant funded and they're bringing in grants all the time. And a lot of what they do is then deliver those grants to partners in the community, whether that's Arcade House, Betty Chin, or Aha, or many, many others out there. So I still think there's a tremendous opportunity there. And I know in Public Works, one of the constraints to adding even more grant writers was space. You know, having the space to actually house the individuals, they're pretty maxed out on space. So that ties back into facilities and facilities management plans and all that. But I think there's some real room there for, for opportunity. I will say that I kind of like a hybrid. I don't really like any one of these options. There's five of them listed, including doing nothing for reorganization. But I would prefer a hybrid. I really think we're going to need to engage the departments, you know, at some level in this process. And was said earlier, there was some request to do some of that. I'm sure departments, you know, are limited in their ability to dive into that very deeply, but I think we need that input. But it can't stop there because I do think that departments in general are going to be somewhat turf protective and siloed and all those other things we've heard about. I mean, there was major reports on siloing back six, seven years ago and stuff like that. So I don't think it can stop there. I do also think that the idea that it needs to be looking at cross-departmental reorganization stuff. And I think Supervisor Wilson, you brought up a lot of valuable points. I mean, a, a climate change, a climate resiliency officer ideally would be working very closely with planning and building, you know, as well as some other departments to, to make that into something far more than it would be just underneath the sheriff's O E S division at, at this point in time. Another one is, you know, if we don't do something to change the way we're operating with our deputies, the sheriffs and all, really great people doing incredible work, but frankly, it's an incarceration loop that we're stuck in, you know, with the way we do that. And from my perspective, rather than adding a whole lot more deputies, I would be rather adding trained outreach workers to ride along with the deputies to deal with what is a preponderance of, of issues that they deal with out on the street, with people dealing with mental health issues, drug addiction issues and other things. And frankly, as, as hard as D H H S staff work, there's still a limit on what they can do. And there are a lot of people that are falling through the cracks that aren't able to get the services that they need. And that is not a reflection on D H H S staff. They do an incredible work with limited resources. But if we ever want to get out of this incarceration loop we're stuck in, building more and more jails, and it's really not the best place to house somebody that's dealing with mental health issues. And, and you know, they do an incredible job trying to bring in resources and deal with that within the jail system. But frankly, so many people out on the streets that we're dealing with need somebody in the patrol car who's trained in de-escalation techniques. And that doesn't include a baton, a taser, or a beanbag shotgun. It includes talking with people and de-escalating the situation and figuring out where we can help them get into programs and services, which again are limited. A lot of people end up in the legal system where they probably ought to be approved for diversion for mental health services in a hospital, in a place where they can actually get long-term care to try and change the trajectory of their lives. But those things are limited, so they end up being sent to prison and serve years in prison, which is not a way to turn the corner on these mental health crises issues that we're dealing with. So I very much think we absolutely need to be looking at reorganization. And for me, it would be getting feedback from the departments, having some cross-departmental conversations, and then ultimately hiring a third-party consultant to come in and that's a professional in this arena and really advising us on how we, what actions we might take and how we go about doing those. And I think we're really probably looking at a 10 to 20-year plan here. I don't think we're looking at something that's like tomorrow, that we just suddenly change and reorganize. It's something that's going to take time and we're going to have to lay out really logical steps to be able to make those steps forward to change the way we do business. So those are some of the thoughts that I have at this time.
Supervisor Zero. And then Bushnell.
Thank you. I, I think this is an understandably overwhelming conversation to probably hear for, for staff. And, and I, I think it's worth pointing out a couple more things that I think, you know, we could be exploring, just to lay it all on the table. And I'm, I'm interested in everything that's been brought up frankly. You know, the question of whether to lump or split departments and whether there's efficiencies by splitting to a more focused, you know, area of work and having more, you know, focused expertise in those smaller departments versus, you know, and then you have more department chairs. And so the question is, you know, which is more efficient? Or whether to lump departments that currently, you know, function really closely together is an important question. You know, there are even, I haven't found very many examples, but there are even some communities that have program-based budgets where they look at, you know, what kinds of programs are they going to try to implement? And, you know, getting people from a variety of disciplines to work together towards an end goal, which is a very different model. You know, in some cases we're able to do work like that, but that, that's a very different way of organizing a budget. You know, I'd like to also point out that, you know, cross-training between departments could happen in some cases where there are similar and complementary opportunities, you know. And I'd love to have department chairs identify, you know, which departments they work closely with and are there opportunities for, for that? Are there opportunities to, to change work schedules or service delivery timeframes for, you know, the community? I know during COVID, there, there was a lot of that. And I, I want the public to be able to access our services and I want to keep people employed and keep the, you know, work happening. So, you know, there are questions, I think, around that that are worth asking. And then, you know, our C A O model is a little wonky for me. I'll just say, you know, our staff do a wonderful job. And I think, you know, there's a question about whether there could be more efficiencies with a different model there. And then looking at retirements and succession planning, you know, are there opportunities to do, again, look at like lumping or splitting departments or departmental collaboration, you know, as we look to, you know, a couple, three years out for certain retirements and, and thinking about, you know, who to, who to get into those positions as we're looking at reorg. So I think this offers a lot of opportunity. It's a much bigger question. I think if we're going to ask staff to spend a lot of time with this ad hoc, it might make sense for them to bounce ideas off us. So I, I'm okay with the idea of considering having the ad hoc discuss this with departments. But I do think we need a bigger overall goal and to offer some form of technical assistance, whether it's like an in-depth analysis of everything the county does by a consultant or a, by request, offering of services for, for support of department heads and their leadership teams. I will just say, you know, Supervisor Bushnell and I are the most junior on this board. You know, certainly you have plenty of experience and I have a lot in government, but you know, having us be the ones that go over this. It could offer something good. It could be the freshest perspective that we have to offer from, from the board. And it could, you know, perhaps lose some knowledge in the process about, you know, who's worked within the county and how and what's been functional and what hasn't. So I, I, I will say, before I wrap up, I'm prepared to go forward with the recommendations that were outlined for the 24, 25 fiscal year as sideboards for budgetary planning as departments are going to kick off their budget planning process very soon. We can look at refining those if those, you know, don't, I still want the feedback if that's not the right size and fit for certain departments. But I want to, you know, kind of set those sideboards as the expectation moving forward. If the board is prepared to make, you know, to make a motion about that or to vote on that, we can go forward with that and then talk about reorg more.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. And it sounds like there is an appetite for reorganization from this board. And I was hopeful that, and I'm kicking the can down the road, is never what we need for budgetary solutions. But coming back to the board with recommendations on what an outside consultant looks like and the cost, getting the feedback from the department heads on their capabilities for that work without impacting their departments a lot. And then also, you know, you've heard some suggestions from board members. And then also, you know, you've heard some suggestions from board members here on what reorganization looks like. I will say that, you know, OES, animal control, the other, all those things that were mentioned all still take funding, no matter what department they're in. And so the efficiencies to move them to a different department, that really needs to be thought about deeply as well. You have, no matter what, have to have a department head there that leads them or create a new position, which then costs, you know, costs more funding. And if you're going to create new departments to have those, those subsets of those departments sit in, that is costly as well. I think that it is fair to have that discussion that no matter where they go, it takes funding. And so looking at efficiencies, maybe where they sit and how that could really work to decrease the budgetary asks in those departments, I think is really key. And so I'm, for the reorganization, you know, does this board have an appetite for getting, making a motion to get, come back with a report on what an outside, you know, facilitator would cost and that type of work? Or do you just want to lump it in?
Well, I'm not sure. I don't know what, we have strategic planning. We have a firm that's working with us now that seems to me should have a kind of a basic understanding who's met with all our department heads and things like that. I tend to agree that if we, you know, we move the corner, it was pretty extensive, we move the corner in under the sheriff because there are quite a few. I always hear there's a lot that aren't, but there are quite a few that have the corner under the sheriff for obvious reasons, because they have the detective capabilities, they have the internal capabilities. And usually they, at the scene of a situation at the same time, it can see different parts and everything. So I don't know about that, reorganizing that. I just, I think we should probably get a full report from the sheriff on that. One of the big things as we sit here, one of the big things we sit here is you guys have to understand, you know, we're the best bargain in town. If you're going to shop, shop in the, you know, the unincorporated areas in Humboldt County because we're three-quarters to one and a half percent cheaper sales tax-wise than anybody incorporated or not. I mean, City of Eureka, they're doing, you know, they're nine and a quarter, they're a cent and a half more than us. You know what a cent and a half sales tax would do to us? And I'm not saying that, but the problem is we're operating, our last sales tax increase was in 2013, Measure Z, right? Our expenses have gone up. We're talking about a road tax. We're talking about a road tax. I like the idea of a road tax. I mean, I think that's great, it's specific. But I'm talking about a road tax for roads. I'm not talking trails and transit because transit has plenty of money, according to them. And we have lots of trails and we have a great Redwood Trail that's got quite a bit of effort going towards it. And I think it's a great idea and the state has taken that on. So I, I think there are places we could probably do some more efficiencies and things like that. We have a lot of old facilities, but a lot of people in the private sector have old facilities too. And they have to adjust accordingly. So as we move forward, we have to honor the programs we've just started, but we have to honor, you know, most of all, it's our employees who do the job. Now, there's going to be a lot of, if we do some belt tightening, there's going to be some attrition. I, I look at Juan Pablo Sarantes asking for more money, but we heard the new voting system, I thought was going to be cheaper because we're going to have voting centers. We're not going to have 144 precincts we have to have. We're going to have less people involved and things like that. But as we get more automated in the voting centers, I can remember 15 years ago, by nine o'clock on Tuesday night, we knew who won. I mean, we had, they were declaring winners. Now we're two, three days, four days, even longer, and they'd stretch it out all the way. This is no reflection on you, Juan Pablo. But as we get more efficient, it seems like we get more inefficient. So it's like, you know, I read a report the other day, we use more paper now that we've gone paperless than we did before. And these little, these little things you hear, and I keep hearing all the other counties do it that way. But I mean, even Sacramento County is eight and seven, three-quarters percent sales tax. And it's about reorganization. It's about monies coming in to pay for the goods and services we provide and having the quality people to do it. So I think the ad hoc will bring us back a lot of different angles and stuff, but I don't know if gutting what, taking everything away from one department because it's going to save us money to putting it into another department. And I've heard this, I've heard this over the last five, six years now about putting a social worker in every sheriff's car. I, I don't know how many times you've been out on patrol or any of you have been in a patrol car for a whole shift, but it's pretty surprising that a lot of our deputies are cross-trained for those situations, domestic violence, all these things and cross-trained. But it's really surprising how much they are actually responding to bumps in the night and everything that I think that we need a officer. And I mean, having a, DHHS has staff available 24/7 to assist when needed in those situations. Are they riding in the car? No, but the response time is, is pretty good as we've seen in certain situations as recent as last night. So, and none of those seems like they save us money. It seems like it's going to cost us money, but, and then we're going to, I mean, we're short on deputies and, and crime is not doing as down like we would hope it to be. So I don't know where we go on this. I'm looking forward to seeing with the ad hoc and with a lot more input from departments. And you're right, there's going to be territorial battles like Matt saying, I don't need. But we also have to look as, is, what do we get calls about, about service more than anything? And that doesn't say, if we haven't heard from you, you're going to get cut. But I think we have to, we have to look at how we slice this by a lot more than, let's just take this, move this, move that. I think it's the ad hoc stepping up that's going to be the catalyst for what we probably go off of.
Supervisor Bushnell.
CAO, have we ever, or when was the last time that the organization did a kind of a structure examination?
2016 was the last time that we evaluated a lot of these services that your board is talking about. And we referenced that some in the staff report. That was heavily focused on the facilities, general services, so a restructuring of IT services. And that's where the Valer Aviation Study also came out of that. So we haven't taken a hard look at it since 2016. I think the Department of Finance was also part of that and we did take it to the voters in 16. And then, as you know, your board recently reevaluated that and opted not to move that forward at this time.
So I saw that referenced in the staff report more for the community listening to that, you know, we have had, you know, that was done by not an outside, go ahead.
Yeah, the CIO's office did that analysis.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I do really think that there are efficiencies that can be recognized throughout the organization. And I know it's not comfortable, it's not a comfortable discussion. And oftentimes, reorganization, people think of cuts in staff and, but I want to reference back to what you said about the abilities to maybe increase services by technology and to recognize maybe that that would make departments more efficient. I do think that we should look there. The other option is to go forward without a lot of, you know, ideas to reduce the deficit. And always restructuring in a business is what you do if you're losing money or not bringing in the revenues. So I'm happy to, you know, hear the rest of the discussion. I think the ad hoc could help with some of that work, but I do really think that we need to have a report back on what a reorganization looks like from an outside consultant and what kind of work they would, you know, could really target on for departments.
Supervisor Zero.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that coming back to understand the costs involved in the scope of work that would be involved. And I'd also be interested in concurrently asking department heads, you know, do you feel that there are ideas you have that you'd like to see, you know, that you feel that you have the adequate resources to propose some ideas already? Or do you, do you want the help? Would something comprehensive be more welcomed? You know, just getting an idea of whether they feel, you know, because I know I've talked to a few departments who feel that, you know, their department is much, much smaller or their mission is much more discreet and specific. So it would be helpful to understand, to be able to get any proposals and scopes of work to start with, you know, that conversation. And then see, oh, are there just, you know, four or five departments that are kind of a little messy or a little more challenging for us to, you know, make recommendations about them? We could seek support for that. But that said, I'm ready to move. Could you bring up the recommendation slide again, though? I'm ready to make a motion about one of those items.
Back lawn, Nikki.
Yeah, thank you. I'm prepared to approve the parameters to develop the fiscal year 2425 budget and approve the 2324 budget adjustments. I'll move that.
Can I propose that we also include in the staff report, it's not listed here, but direct staff to return at third quarter only if the budget parameters set forth in fiscal year 2425 require substantial changes?
Yes.
Okay. So that is recommendation two and four. Two, three, and four, sorry.
Second.
I don't feel we got to number four exactly. I think that's two and three.
Two, three, and four in the staff report.
Oh, thank you.
This is consolidated for you.
Okay, okay. Okay.
We already did three.
Yeah. Well.
Apologies. Two, three, and four in the staff report represent items, just item two here on this slide.
Okay. So moved.
Now I am confused because I.
Yeah, me too.
Please read. Okay, I'm looking at the staff report and which items are we talking about now?
Item, item two discusses the budget parameters.
Yep.
Item three discusses the budget adjustments.
Yep.
And item four discusses the need to return for third quarter only if necessated.
These numbers are different. Thank you. Got it. Okay.
Sorry for the confusion on this slide.
That's all right. Yeah, I'm seconding still.
And just to clarify that, that is for just the 2425 budget year and adjustments to 2324. And this whole conversation we're having about how far out are we projecting and what are we asking, you know, and what does that mean that we're asking departments to do? I think it's clear that we'll need to come back with something there, but I still, you know, think we need to have more discussion about what that is. And I would just go back and advocate for that idea of projecting out, you know, how, when does our money run out essentially? So that we can work backwards from there in asking staff to do any reorgs or other cost-saving measures. But that's a separate topic.
Can I just get some clarification? I just want to make sure I have the right. So two on the slide, approve the parameters to develop the fiscal year 2425 budget and the 2324 budget adjustments. And then three and four on the staff report, the.
So Nikki, yeah, just two, three, and four on the staff.
On the staff report.
Yes.
Thank you.
Don't look at the slide.
Thanks.
Don't look at the man behind the green curtain.
And it was Supervisor Arroyo first and Supervisor.
Wilson.
Bone?
No, Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Chair.
Please.
So if we were to do kind of a study on the reorganization, what timeframe, and getting back like costs, what timeframe would that look like in your department? And getting some feedback from the departments, maybe two months?
Sixty days, I think. Yes. I think two months would be adequate. We, like I said, we do have some initial analysis that we've done. We weren't comfortable putting that forward without some guidance from your board, but I think that it's safe to say it's very much in line with the conversation that you've presented today. So we can, we can work with departments on the context of that. And then we can also work on gaining some scoping and costing for an outside consultant. That'll be rough because we, this is a large enough allocation that it would require an RFP. So, you know, we would need to go a little bit further down that road, but we can get you some general parameters and maybe some tiered approaches of what your board might be interested in.
Thank you. I mean, I don't think, it's rough today saying possibly 500,000. I think we need that a little more.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, a little more effectiveness with the.
Yeah. And we can tier it too, you know, are we only interested in looking at one or two or three departments or org-wide? Or, you know, we can break that down a little bit so that we can find that sweet spot with your board's comfortability level.
Okay.
Supervisor Zero.
Thank you. I don't want to repeat myself too much here, but I do still want to drive home the point that I think we need to have this, even a rough projection of what we're, what cliff there is and when so that we know what to ask for from department chairs. Like if the question is, can you cut your budget by X percent or keep it at this cap? And recommend organizational approaches that do that versus some other, I think to get feedback from the department chairs, we'll need to be asking the right question. And I don't think it behooves us to really just ask them the question of what would it take to reorganize your department because to what end? So I do think it's worth having a little bit more discussion about that now or asking that what comes back first is a longer-term projection of costs and, you know, what kind of cliff we're really facing. Does that, does that make sense?
Chair.
Supervisor Bushnell.
So I, I guess the CIO would be the answer, but I think 2026 is kind of our cliff. And without some kind of cost savings recognized, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's what I've been discussing with her and the rest of the budget team, like where, where are we at and where's that spot where we're going to have to start really, really making cuts? And how do we avoid that? But I do think that you're correct that getting, getting an analysis of what we're going to look at for reorganizations within departments and recognizing what it would save. We don't want to do it and be, you know, not spend money and then not have any savings. So I see the CIO wants to chime in.
Yeah, yeah. So we're estimating that roughly, I'm just going to say roughly because I'm not looking exactly at the staff report, we're estimating we're roughly going to spend 12 and a half million in actuals this year. We budgeted 18.4, so, you know, we're expecting we're going to come in less than that. We're estimating next year that we think the actuals will probably be about the same at that 12 and a half million. The budget will probably reflect upwards of the 18 million. So a very similar picture next year to what we're experiencing this year. So that means in 2526, if we spend 12 and a half this year, 12 and a half next year, we will be roughly, we'll have about 12 and a half that following year unless we have an influx of revenues in some way. Measure S is one thing where we, any measure S money that comes in, we've got 14 million that's outstanding, that's going to be a windfall for us. We're not planning to budget for that because it's such a turbulent environment for us right now. So if we can maintain the momentum that we have this year and. So if we can maintain the momentum that we have this year into next year, and then into 2526, by 2627, we are out of general fund monies, and we're looking at, you know, much more extreme things, dipping into reserves and reducing our workforce more. So, so that in my mind is sort of that cliff, but in order to remain stagnant, stagnant for three years, we still need to continue to cut those costs back, because there are going to, there's going to be natural increase in salaries that occurs, and inflation that incurs, and so the only way to absorb that will be, you know, continuing with the things that your board has done this year and will continue to do next year through attrition and the VSIPS, and just being very conscientious of our spending to be sure that we hold on to all of those general fund dollars to get us as far down the line. So that's sort of loosely where the cliff lies, but to Supervisor Arroyo's point, we can definitely put together a three-year sort of fiscal output, outlook for particularly the general fund, which is where our primary concern lies. I think that's probably something we would need to bring with budget, or, you know, shortly before budget, so we are having those conversations in conjunction. And, you know, we feel very comfortable going into next year with these parameters that we have established so far, and, and as you're seeing, it's a very different budget message from last year, we're not proposing hiring freezes, we're not talking about furloughs, and those more extreme things, so that is good, you know, from our comfortability level, but having good information going into next year so that we can plan for 2526 will be, continue to be critical, and you will continue to hear us talk with you about how we need to conserve pennies wherever we can.
All right, Supervisor Bushnell?
I'll make a motion that we, that the CAO comes back to our board two, within two months with the reorganization structure, include, it would, including input from department heads, and also what outside consulting costs and looks like. And options.
60 days or 90 days?
What are you comfortable with?
It's a pretty heavy lift.
90, 90 is an absolute, and we can make every effort to strive for 60, but that gives us that cushion. We are going into.
I understand.
Budget season, which is the time of year where you will often see staff crying in the corner somewhere, so.
I'll amend that to 90 days, 90 days. And then for the, just, so that would be the motion, and then for staff, for options, you know, to bring those options of, maybe it looks like five or six departments that we really restructure, and that could be where the efficiencies really will be effective. So just, I don't need to put that in the motion, but just to, for direction.
I'll second the idea of the information coming back in 90 days, I want to just make one, I think the wording was, come back with the reorganization, and I think we're just coming back with the options about that.
Yeah, option, yeah.
I don't want to freak everyone out.
I added that at the end.
And I do appreciate, I know this has been a lot, I appreciate folks bearing with this. I, I really want to involve our departments as much as we possibly can in any ideas or recommendations that come forward. And I'd still like to keep on the table, like, that one of the models be potentially offering technical assistance on a, on a as-needed basis. So, thank you.
Got a clarification there, and I think we hit the, I heard a quote this morning of you, from, I think it was from staff or department heads, if you're going to do us, include us, so that it does get out there to get the department heads, so I appreciate that.
Ready?
Ready.
Chair Bone?
Well, I'm not that ready, yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes, and just for clarification, I had a motion thrown out there, I don't know where it went, but, so I'm just wondering, have we gotten actually through our, okay, great, thanks.
I think we voted on this, why I asked you, yeah. Yeah. No, you're fine, I had to ask you to, for verification, then you looked at me and said, thanks for the leadership.
Chair, can I?
We've been going three and a half hours, so.
Could I ask for one more clarification? Does this board wish to give the ad hoc direction or feedback for that, please?
Well, I think I, through the chair, I think I gave my thoughts on this. I, I, my only thing would just be, don't be afraid of hard conversations, and don't be afraid to go out the comfort zone of yourselves and department heads and everybody, and the, these are, these are not, these are actually the hardest conversations to have. I've been involved in these types of things for, in other organizations as well, and, yeah, just be as creative and as open-minded as possible.
Supervisor Jerome?
From kind of a process nerd standpoint, I'll just say, my understanding of the charge of the ad hoc is, is by and large to look at this next fiscal year's budget and work with departments on that. So if we're expanding that to be a bit of a multi-year process or something like that, I think we might want to bring something back, maybe that can come back as a decision point when we have a report back in, in 90 or fewer days. I just, I want to kind of respect that the ad hoc process is supposed to be, to Supervisor Madron's point, very finite and fixed term. And I think this bigger conversation is something that more of the public will want to engage with us on as well, so I'm fine with leaving it as is right now, but I also really want to hammer home that idea that if we're asking departments and consultants to do work, to what end is it? And I, we can totally have that conversation once we have more information and a, a bit more feedback, but I, I don't know if it's telling them, like, assure fiscal health 10 years from now, or assure that we don't have to lay people off in four years, or, you know, reduce costs by a specific percentage so that we can have more reserves, whatever that is. I think as the ad hoc, I don't want to go into those conversations going, it's a moving target, I don't know, what can you do? Because we're at the point where I think we need a little bit more full board direction than that. So again, I think that can come back, but I don't want it to be unclear what we're doing in our ad hoc. My view of what the ad hoc is appointed for is to, to handle this year's budget and go through it with departments, so.
Supervisor Wilson?
Right, I agree completely. I do think that if the ad hoc is also dealing with the issue around the potential for restructuring of some kind, that maybe your suggestion is, is actually a good one, which is to see what you can do in that, you know, in the, in the short term, and then we'll bring it, I suggest bringing it back to the board for some more direction, and potentially restructuring, not restructuring, but reallocating or re-whatever, you know, making a new ad hoc, sort of upping sort of that commitment, maybe it's not the same people, maybe it's different people, maybe it's whatever it is, but really just more functionally define what that ad hoc would be under that, and sort of like separate those two streams of, of inquiry and, and attention. Because I think that the, if you thought that the, it was really hard to do this ad hoc last time, which I absolutely acknowledge, and think it absolutely was, and I'm absolutely sure of that, because I remember the amount of information you guys brought back and perspective was really robust, to add on to that, this issue or discussion around restructuring, I think is, is, is really significant. So by all means, I, I think that the, that the, this ad hoc committee should, or could, or please bring back when you feel like it's, it's relevant to do that, so, the restructuring stuff.
I think basically, give us what you got.
Okay.
Run with it.
I, I will say, last time we asked people to make any structural changes they could make, and it was like, we got some, which was great, we did the VSIP program, which sort of created a bit of a structural change for a few years, and there was, it was a really diverse approach to that, which is good. Maybe, you know, maybe we just want to empower folks to do what they think is best, but without a clear goal in mind other than the, the single fiscal year and reducing expenses to the extent possible, it was difficult to, as an ad hoc, give feedback about that, especially as you're learning what, frankly, what every department does. So a lot of it was me going, uh-huh, uh-huh, and absorbing like a sponge and saying, thank you very much. So this is going to be a similar conversation, but I, I feel more empowered to say, like, you know, really facing a cliff, and what, what more can you do this year until we get that, that feedback, so.
With that, and the votes are done, nice job, kid, good job. I'll turn it over to County Council to announce closed session. I would, and I'll ask right now, poll the board, is everybody healthy and wealthy and wise enough to go into closed session right now and then be done for the day, or do you want time?
I would say a closed session should be no longer than 15 minutes.
Yeah. Okay, just making sure everybody can make it. Yep.
It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D2 and E3, in order to discuss exposure to litigation in seven potential cases regarding the claims for property tax refunds submitted by Pacific Bell, AT&amp;T Mobility LLC, and T-Mobile West LLC. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of Jesus Soseto versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt Superior Court Case Number CV2400105.
With that, is there any public comment on our closed session? Seeing none, we will be back at, when we get here.
With regard to item K1, the board voted unanimously to direct the risk manager to deny the claims for refund of property taxes levied for tax years 2017, 2018, and 2019, 2020 through 2021, 2022, submitted by Pacific Bell, AT&amp;T Mobility LLC, and T-Mobile West LLC. With regard to item K2, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with Lieber, Cassidy, Whitmore for the defense of the case of Jesus Soseto versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt Superior Court Case Number CV2400105.
Thank you. And with that, seeing no other reason except a desire to adjourn, so that's what we will do. Thank you.